We need Mary, we need Jim.
We need one more.
Mary, Jim, and Sheila. Okay, I think Sheila's on the way.
Oh, Craig's up there.
I'm here.
Sorry Craig, we forgot you. Yeah, but I'd like to.
Yeah, quick to forget. Thanks a lot.
Sorry.
Craig, I remember.
Thanks, Jack.
Hi.
Go that way.
Go to your name tag.
You're right here, I think. I think.
One, two, three, four.
We got six.
We got six. We're just Jim. So he'll be here in ten or fifteen minutes, probably.
Is Chris DeWitt coming?
No, Chris is traveling.
Oh.
He couldn't make it, because of the date change.
Now that you guys are back in person, does Jim still bring the donuts, or not?
Did he ever bring?
Oh, I don't know about the donuts.
Craig brings the donuts.
During budget season, we'll let you.
Do the budget season.
That's all it is.
Just the budget season.
He's done that in two years now. Two years.
All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Charlton. It is October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and I want to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Board of Finance. I'll call the meeting to order. Ask that our board members join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would, please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all. I want to acknowledge the tragedy that occurred in Bristol last week, where two police officers were shot and killed in the line of duty, and another was shot and wounded, all in a senseless act of violence. Our hearts are with their loved ones and families, the Bristol community, and the entire law enforcement community that's affected by this tragedy. I would offer a prayer for the swift and complete recovery of Officer Alex Zierato, and ask that we join in a moment of silence to honor the memories of Sergeant Dustin Tomante and Officer Alex Hamzi. Okay, to the members of the public who've dialed in or joined us on the WebEx tonight, please know that you're muted and will not be heard by board members until public comments called for during the meeting. Typically, we invite public comment during meetings when voting items are on the agenda, and we have a number of voting items on a lengthy agenda this evening. In order to keep the meeting moving along within a reasonable timeframe, we'll invite public comment pertaining to any of the voting items at the beginning of tonight's agenda. If any member of the public who's joining remotely would like to make a statement, please log into the WebEx and indicate so in the chat box at this time, along with a notation of which agenda item you'd like to speak to. Statements should be limited to no more than three minutes. As always, members of the public are encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board at the following email, BOF@FairfieldCT.org. If you do so, please remember to include your name and address, as you would with live comment. Tonight is a special meeting. Because of the date change, the original meeting date was October fourth, and it was rescheduled to this evening as a result of the Yom Kippur holiday. As I mentioned earlier, we have a number of voting items on tonight's agenda, including spending appropriations and bond authorization. We also have voting items before us related to a proposed reallocation of previously approved ARPA funds, allocations of the town's year-end revenue surplus, and expense reapprropriations and transfers. Okay, so we will move to item three, which is to take public comment on any of items four through ten in the agenda. Dave, do we have anyone? No? Anyone in the room? Nope. Okay. All right. Seeing no comments, we will move to item four. To hear, consider, and approve a recommendation from the WPCA to approve additional funding of up to $300,000 from the WPCA fund balance for the design of the Center Street Pump Station, including the Forest Main. This item was approved by the Board of Selectmen last night. Can I have a motion to hear this item? Mr. Matola, seconded by Ms. Leclair. Okay, the backup materials are, for this item, are posted online on page one. And here to present this item, we have Christine, is that Christine? Sally, hi. And Mr. Jared Schmidt, our CFO. And is there anyone else here? John, is John here as well on this item? John Cattell?
Yeah, he may be monitoring.
Okay. All right, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we're happy to have Christine Tiselli here. She's a fairly new project manager for the WPCA, just recently hired. So the items four and five are both for a design of pump station and Forest Main at two different locations in the town. Each of them is, we're asked for $300,000, which would come from the fund balance of the WPCA. These are very old, need to be replaced, and they're part of a broader plan to replace these, including one that was already approved, one of the pump stations that was already approved for Fairfield Beach Road. And that was, I believe it was approved last year. So what we're trying to do is combine three of them, so we can do the design of these, you know, one, two, three, thing, thing, thing. And then the, you know, at some point after that, we would, we would start looking for funding to do the actual construction of the, of the pump station and the Forest Main. You have the backup in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions on any of the, or any, the backup is in your package.
Okay, questions from the board on this item?
None, sure.
Yes.
Just real quick. Hey, Jared, how are you?
Good.
Just quick, on the balance after the two, for the fund balance, where does it leave us? So it'll be $600,000 ultimately, right, what you're looking for tonight?
Correct. For these two, $300,000, $300,000 total. The balance would be about 12.7 million.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Testani.
The idea for use of the balances for projects like this that are lower cost design, and getting them to a point where they're shell-ready, so to speak. And with, what is the case with these three is that they are going to be targets for MetroCOP funding. So, you know, there's a potential for getting grants for the construction of these.
How long would it take, the completion of these projects?
For the design.
For the design. Have you started on the first one yet, the design piece, for the one that already got the approval? He's taking it easy on you. What's happening?
We're preparing an RFP.
Taking a rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Other questions from board members? Ms. Leclair?
What will be the total cost of these things once they're designed? Like, is there, is this a percentage of what you think the cost will eventually be, or you don't know yet?
So that, for the, you're talking about the construction?
The construction.
For the Center Street project, it, the total is $8 million. Split up five million for the pump station and three million for the Forest Main. And then for South Pine Creek, the next one on the, that's five million. Three million for the pump station and two for the Forest Main. And Fairfield Beach Road was the same amount, five million.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leclair. Mr. Matola?
Jared, are those just kind of estimates? Are those hard, are they estimates?
They're estimates.
Thanks.
Other questions from board members? Okay. Just a quick one. Do you, what's roughly the timing we're looking at here? Are we trying to accomplish this by a certain, at the construction, I mean?
You're estimating about a year and a half to complete the design for all three pump stations and all three Forest Main services with them?
So that's the design, and then, I guess what I'm trying to understand is the larger dollars that will be on the waterfall, what's the timeframe of that?
So, waterfall in front of me, but the, these two, I'd have to go back and look, but I want to say twenty-five, and that's why twenty-five is when they would start construction.
So these are on the waterfall with the estimates that you
Yes.
just provided, Ms. Leclair.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Okay, seeing none, we can vote on this item. All those who approve additional funding from the WPCA fund balance for the design of the Center Street Pump Station, including the Forest Main, please say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, eight-zero. Mr. DeWitt is not here, I should point out. Thank you, everyone. All right.
I think it's seven-zero.
Seven-zero, I'm sorry. I should have counted. Seven-zero. Mr. Walsh is not here as well. Seven-zero. Thank you. Did we, I think we missed somebody who wanted to make public comment. Is it? Okay. Would it be okay with the board if we address this public comment as part of the agenda item that it relates to?
Sure.
Which, Ms. Jay? Welcome. Sorry to do this, but we, we passed the public comment section. Would you, would you be willing to come back and make your statement at the time when this agenda item comes up? It's going to be a little later in the evening, but would that be okay with you?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was texting that I was here, but I was not quick enough. I was trying to get in during public comment. I was on and commenting. I actually had, am in the middle of another board meeting. Do we have any idea what time that will be at?
Probably not earlier than another hour, hour and a half.
Okay. If, yes, thank you. I will, I will keep an eye out. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so we will move to item five, which is a similar item, but needs a separate vote to hear, consider, and approve a recommendation from the WPCA to approve additional funding of up to $300,000 from the WPCA fund balance for the design of the South Pine Creek Pump Station and Forest Main. Again, also approved by the Board of Selectmen last night. Motion to put this item before us, Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. Testani. Backup materials for this item are posted online, beginning on page two. Questions from board members? Ms. Marmian?
Yes, hi. I just have a quick question. Given the timing of this, are we in any, is the town in any danger? I know we're looking at storms that are going on. In the meantime, are we at risk for having this pump fail?
No, pumps are functional. It's just that the maintenance that's involved in keeping them going.
What are the, what is the maintenance cost that's involved, or what has it been, kind of, if you look one, two, three years back? What are we spending in the town?
John Cattell?
I don't have that.
Okay, can you get back to us on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from board members? Okay, seeing none. We can vote on this item. All those who approve additional funding of up to $300,000 from the WPCA fund balance for the design of the South Pine Creek Pump Station and Forest Main, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Testani, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Leclair, Mr. Stark. Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, we will move to item six. To hear, consider, and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating, oh, thank you, by the way, a resolution appropriating $3,481,757 for the cost of roof replacement projects at Sherman Elementary School and Riverfield Elementary School, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such approval. Again, this item was approved by the Board of Selectmen last night. Okay, I see Mr. Papa George here. Welcome, and Mr. Peterson from the Board of Education. We also have, if there are questions on the bond resolution, or anything else technical, Michael Andriana from Holman Conley on WebEx. Gentlemen?
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, should I, I don't know if I said this. The backup materials are online. Bond resolution begins on page three. Project description begins on page ten. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, these are the two roofs that we have identified as needing to be replaced. You may have noticed a switch from McKinley to Riverfield due to some failing issues at Riverfield that we had to do some more extensive temporary repairs to Riverfield cafeteria area over the last year, over the last summer, I should say. So that's why they were moved up on the waterfall as opposed to McKinley at this time. The reason these are coming before you tonight, and kind of, I don't know, I was just fast-tracking, but we moved ahead of schedule, is due to the fact that the governor has put out a $150 million grant for conditioning and indoor air quality, which are all applications for that grant money, is due to the OSCR, which is the school reimbursement department for the state, the first week in December. So in order for us to apply for the reimbursement for these two roofs, we would be going right in, if we left these on the table until down the road, we'd be going right into that pile with all that $150 million ask for grant reimbursement for indoor air quality. By hopefully getting these approved tonight by your team and by the RCM on Monday, it allows us to do a November application process since then. So it puts us in the running with the state prior to all the funding for the indoor air quality. That being said, it would allow us to hopefully get funding approval back from the state sometime right before that, early December, and get these out the bid early January, in hopes to get better pricing by having them out early as opposed to later. That being said, also, there's the supply chain issues that are currently still out there with insulation for roofs and stuff. It allows us to guarantee these roof projects get done this summer as needed. The assets for Riverfield Elementary School is of $1,565.110, and Roger Sherman's $1,916.47. The Roger Sherman roof was installed in ninety-one and had a, had a warranty extension program done to it in two thousand and twelve. And the Roger, I'm sorry, that was Riverfield. Roger Sherman's roof was also installed in two thousand, in nineteen ninety-one, and has been out of warranty since twenty sixteen at this point.
Right. Questions from board members?
They're both from nineteen ninety-one?
They are. It's part of a, my understanding is it was part of a large roofing project that happened in that year for multiple roofs.
Okay, Mr. Testani?
Hey, how are you tonight?
Were you finished?
I'm sorry, Mary.
No, I just thought it had been, maybe it was just repaired somewhere along the way, because I thought that roof's always had a few issues between, I guess, the cafeteria and the media center.
So the Riverfield roof did have a extension warranty repairs and program done to it in two thousand and twelve. That could be what you're referencing.
And when we did the renovation, there was no work done?
At Riverfield, not at the time, because it was still under warranty.
And then the same for Sherman's. We, we've done renovations.
We've done renovations. There was supposed to be, on the book, there was supposed to be a phase four renovation at Sherman, which included the roof. At this time, we've chosen to hold the phase four projects, except for we identified the roof still needed to be done. That's why it's as a standalone project at this time, and not as a phase four renovation project.
Thank you.
Mr. Testani?
Thanks. Just, can you go over again, what happened in McKinley and why it migrated? Did you say to, so Riverfield is taking the place of McKinley?
Correct. Riverfield is in worse condition. We had to do a, basically, almost similar, if you remember, we did at Osgo, a single membrane kind of sheet over the top of, part of the roof to stop water infiltration. We had to do the same thing at Riverfield this summer for the cafeteria area.
Okay, so what is the condition of McKinley, and how long is that anticipated to last?
McKinley will fall back onto our waterfall for the following year, and our, our consultants believe that we should not have a problem keeping it dry throughout the two-year period.
Okay, so let me ask this. So if it's, so you're saying it won't need maintenance, it won't need upkeep, it won't need repair for?
Not that it won't need upkeep and repair or maintenance. We'll continue to be able to keep it up and dry in the building. We'll have to keep an eye on it.
It won't need a financial appropriation to repair the roof for at least a year?
Right. It will, out of our operating budget, we do maintain the roofs and monitor and inspect them.
Right, sure. So, just out of my curiosity, so why was it being considered for tonight, then? If it won't, if it wouldn't need, right, repair
Yep.
for a year, why was it being considered for tonight, this meeting before Riverfield?
It was originally placed on the waterfall due to the waterfall schedule that we have, which would have been in line with the years installed versus how many years and the warranty issues on there.
Right, now, okay, I understand that, but tonight was for, like, immediate repair, right?
For McKinley?
Yes, wasn't that, that was going to be part of the project?
It was part, it was going to be part of the, not tonight. It was originally on the waterfall last year when it was presented, but now we've made the change and swapped the two roofs out.
Because of the need of?
Because of the more urgent need of Riverfield.
Okay, okay, okay. I think I'm with you. I think I got it. All right, thank you. Thanks, ma'am, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Ms. Marmian?
So, it's great, this grant, fabulous, but it's for air conditioning, and we're here tonight to talk about a roof replacement, so, but we can apply for money under the grant for the air conditioning?
No, this, the, our concern is that the money for the indoor air quality grant is the same group of people that identify, that will be going through those grant applications that also do the building construction applications, the OSCR group in the state. We feel that they're going to be, come the first week in December when those grants are due.
They'll be inundated?
They're going to be inundated. So we want to get these in there before they get inundated.
I see. I thought we were going for the grant.
No, not for the indoor, we will be going for that as well, for other projects.
Good, great.
But not for these.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Matola?
So on the handout about where you have, for example, Riverfield, River Public Schools, Loan for Facilities Plan, Project Summary Sheet, you have the total cost, the total budget, but you don't have anything filled in for contingency, hazardous materials, commissioning? Is that just something that's going to come later on?
So the, the construction budget for this, the contingency should be included in the area of college. I don't know why it's not broken out, but it is included in that.
So this figure covers everything that says zero here?
Yeah, everything is a zero.
Still haven't broken it out.
Except for the design budget, which was approved by your
We did that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Stark?
I'm not sure if you already answered this. You might have, I didn't quite hear. How long ago was the Silver Petricelli estimate, though?
The original Silver Petricelli?
Yeah.
They didn't actually, they don't do, you're talking about the proposal, or?
Well, these cost estimates that are in here.
The cost, so we have two different cost estimates. We have on the waterfall, which was a conceptual design cost estimate, and now these numbers have actually been provided by Silver Petricelli within the last few months as bid documents. That's why we, our new process, and we're hoping that you guys are aboard with and keep with, is getting the money for the design aspect a year ahead of the roof replacement
Yeah.
so that we can actually have bid documents, construction documents, and get truer numbers before we come to you with the project.
Yeah, but the reason I ask is if you look at the rest of our agenda, we have to approve
Yeah.
a lot of things that have gotten more expensive, but it sounds like these are recent.
Yes, these were over the summer, they were completed, and we are, as soon as the state approves, ready to go out and bid with documents.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Other questions from board members? Mr. Walsh?
I mean, I just have a, I mean, it's just, you know, when I first saw Riverfield, obviously, with the amount of money that we spent, what was the line for the project?
Yeah.
I'd have to get the number only, approximately. Approximately. It just seemed odd that the roof wasn't in that entire project, because it was such a large number. But I, I understand that you go based on warranties and whatever, so.
Yeah, we follow the warranties.
I do get that. I'm just slightly disappointed in the material, but to see the word roof field, which wasn't, if I could see that, it was about twenty years. Thanks.
Okay. Other questions on the, for Mr. Papa George, Mr. Peterson?
Just one quick follow-up. So, I understand you're saying, we talked about McKinley, what about the other roofs of the other schools? Like, what kind of condition are they in? Are we, you know, my concern is, are we going to have an appropriation for another request of five million next month? Because this roof isn't, you know what I'm saying?
At this time, we don't.
Andrew Ward's not good.
No.
You know, Lalo's not good. You know what I'm saying? We could go all through every school in the, in the town. So how do we know what the status of the other roofs are?
There's no guarantees, but we do have a comprehensive preventative maintenance program, where we have teams out on the roofs, inspecting.
How often is that?
They do, they do it a couple times a year, but they also respond if we do have a leak or we have a concern and overflowing then. They come out, they, we have, we use a school, we use a computerized system. Our head custodians report any concerned areas. The company comes out immediately from that report, and they evaluate the area of the roof.
So as a normal maintenance, when you say a couple times a year, I hope you understand, what does that mean?
It's usually
Is it a couple times per?
Quarterly.
For school, per year, or?
It's quarterly for the PM contractor to come out, but it's also, in addition to that, every time we have a incoming storm or something, the head custodians go up and walk the roofs, make sure the drain lines are clear, there's no debris on the roofs, and that everything is clear. And they will identify areas that are concerned to them as well, and put it into the automated system, which will create a work order and have our company come out.
Is there a set time? So would they inspect it springtime, after the winter, what's the?
So before winter and after winter is the basis. So it's the quarterly, so first annual of the.
And so, just playing this up for just one more minute, if they've gone out and done the inspections, right, you, is it you personally that gets the report from, is it an inspection company, is it a construction company, who's
It's a roof.
Someone we've contracted with, or the Board of Ed contacted with, I should say?
They're professionals for contractors. It's a
They, so they'll go out, they'll do the inspection twice a year, as you're saying, first school, right?
Yeah.
And they then send you or the Board of Ed a report, or how does that work?
They send to the maintenance shop, to the maintenance supervisor. He gets the report, and he looks at it, and he'll bring to our meeting with, with me, any concern that he has at the time, too.
Okay, so therefore, if there had been something of a more serious nature with McKinley, which is, was taken off the table for tonight, you would have already been alerted with that, or any other roof that I had?
Yeah. The, the Riverfield roof was identified during one of the building inspections, and we've been keeping an eye on it, and that's why we're at that point now.
So, when it was identified in one of the quarterly inspections, what quarterly inspection would that have been?
It was just after, just before winter of last year. So we looked at it, we kept an eye on it. We, we had them out regularly through the winter doing repairs and fixes on it. And then in spring, when the weather got a little bit warmer, we met, we sat with the team and met with them and discussed a more temporary but permanent solution to get it through the spring and through the school year.
Which is that carpet you were talking about earlier?
The carpet that we put on.
Okay.
Something that we couldn't do over the winter, but as the weather changed.
Was the town charged any extra money for that temporary carpet? Was the town charged any extra money for that temporary carpet or whatever it was?
We did have, that was out of.
Out of your operating budget?
Out of our operating.
Okay, got it. Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Other questions? Ms. Leclair?
Just to clarify from something Jack asked. So with these roof projects, since we have 16, 17 schools, we should expect to see probably two of them at least every year because the roofs last about 20 years?
You will, you will most likely, if the waterfall doesn't change, you will see a partial roof replacement at Holland Hill, which I know Mr. Walsh won't want to hear because that building just had a construction project as well. And then you will also see the McKinley roof on the next year waterfall.
But it will be continuous? This is something we should always plan for?
I don't have the waterfall in front of me, I apologize for that, but there is, I believe, a small break between roofs and then we jump into them again. The waterfall that the town, that the Board of Ed has just received and looked at, which should be online, but it is not, and I apologize for that. You will see that the focus on the waterfall over the next 10 years is heating, cooling, and roofs.
And is there any savings in doing a lot of roofs at once, like we, like 91 had done? Or is it better to just do a few at a year, like each year?
There could be value engineering in that. I, I stress that I would not necessarily think that it was the best way as we are right now from 91. Now we have a bunch of roofs that were at the end of life and we're trying to get them in and done. And that's why you're seeing roof after roof after roof come up. I think spacing them out allows us to make it more powerful for the community.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Leclair. Other questions? Mr. Walsh?
Sherman, I know we have to do all those roof penetrations for the fresh air intake. Does that cause the roof to deteriorate quicker than normal?
It did not. We, it was on the, Sherman was on the waterfall for this coming year anyway, so I wasn't involved, unfortunately, back then because I probably would have talked more about doing a roof replacement before putting all the equipment on the roof that now has to be lifted, so, but.
That's kind of the question. I forgot who you were in the position, so.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, I was just kind of thinking this through and whether it really made sense to do those roof penetrations, the work on the roofs and, and then getting the, you had to get the warranty companies out with our roofers to make sure that they inspected, to make sure that they had properly sealed the roof penetration. And now all, kind of all for naught in a way.
We're gonna do a new roof and we're gonna have to raise equipment.
Okay, okay. And then on both of these projects, with Riverfield and Sherman, is this going towards the amount of capital projects that are gonna be permitted under the waterfall?
Yes, with the 12.5.
Yes, yes, so they're both applied.
They're being entered into that. Yeah, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just real quick, I'm just curious, Mr. Papa George, in the future, moving forward, it would be burdensome? You know, I'm just thinking if we maybe had a little more notice, we wouldn't be sort of reacting, or I'll speak for myself. And especially having to replace or repair both of the roofs. You, you sort of had a little bit of a notice, would you say, maybe three months ago? Is that fair to say?
For?
For these two, that you were gonna need them both?
Well, the Roger Sherman was on the waterfall.
It was, so the only one that wasn't?
Was Riverfield.
And you were sort of notified of that when?
Uh, we were during the winter.
The last inspector, like you, like you and I were talking about?
Maybe even closer to eight, nine.
But to be specific, there were two roofs on the waterfall.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, my, my thing, Jeff, was maybe just give the Board of Finance or the administration a heads up, hey, listen, you know, this roof might need money for repair in the near future because this is what our inspectors found. We're trying to do A, B, C, D to correct it. I'm just giving you a heads up, it might cost the town more money. That's what I'm thinking.
I'll say from the board's perspective, we, we were getting updates, you know, about, you know, issues at Riverfield for, for a while. It didn't come to us in this format.
In terms of needing the, the extra money allocation piece, Jeff?
Well, we, we knew that, that, we knew that that roof was deteriorating faster than had been in.
So you, you surmised that it would probably need some?
It was not a surprise when it came before the board. I will say that. It didn't frankly occur to, to inform the Board of Finance, but I take your point.
Yeah, when did it, when did you, the Board of Ed, see that? It would have been last month, probably.
Well, right, we voted on it last month, but again, we've, we've gotten updates, you know, through the grapevine in some ways, from Mr. Papa George.
And the board was notified when we did the extensive repair to it as well.
Yeah, and maybe if there is something like an extensive repair, maybe give us a heads up. We like Sherman, so.
And just to, just to Mr. Testani's point, I just want to point out, now that we've got this capital project group ongoing and we expect to get quarterly updates on the capital projects, there'll be an opportunity if things happen or are gonna be swapped out. Hopefully that'll be easier, because I, I do understand that between waterfalls, people forget things and a lot of things happen, so. Thank you. All right. Mr. Stark?
That question you got about interest rate swaps, I think it came up in.
Yeah, I just, no, I do. I just wanna, does anybody have any other questions for, before we get to the bond resolution for Mr. Papa George or Mr. Peterson on the project? Okay. Questions on the bond resolution? Did you want to state that question?
I don't know if you.
No, go ahead, Mr. Peterson. Yeah.
Okay, so someone contacted?
Yeah, we just, we had a question from a member of the public for.
I think he misunderstood the bond resolution. I'll just give my two cents. He implied that we, well, not we, but the town and its financial advisors might swap what is likely fixed rate debt for floating rate debt, and I don't think we're necessarily going to do that. But my, I think the bigger point is that the bond resolution is very oil or plate language, which simply empowers the CFO and the advisors to do what they think best, and we stay the heck out of it, so. But would we, so the question, I guess for you, though, would be, we're not issuing floating rate debt these days.
We are not.
And you wouldn't want to change fixed to floating, would you?
Right, so we are, it's standard language, that's in bond resolutions, and we have Mike Andriana from Pullman Commley, who's on, on the WebEx call, and he can probably go into more detail about it.
Okay.
Uh, nope.
You're muted, you're muted still.
You're muted.
Do it on your computer?
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, uh, yes, this is Mike Andriana from Pullman Commley. The bond resolution you have in front of you does include kind of standard language, the language about being able to potentially use interest rate swap agreements. And as was mentioned, you know, the idea of maybe you do floating rate. That, that is all kind of language that is permitted by Connecticut statutes. But to my recollection, and I've been working on Fairfield bond issues for the last 15 years, the town has never issued variable rate debt, has never entered into a swap, has done everything on a fixed rate basis. It is just language that, that is available, that is left to kind of the bond committee. If in, you know, in the best interest, based on advice of the town's financial advisor and, and bond counsel, if there was ever a time that it would make sense to do something like that, you at least have the authority to do it. But I can tell you that there are almost no municipalities in Connecticut that issue variable rate debt or use swaps. It is just language that, that gives the town more flexibility.
Thank you for that. Mr. Stark, you're good? Okay. All right. Any other questions on the bond resolution around this project? Okay. Seeing none, all those who approved the resolution appropriating $3,481,799? 89, yes. Oh, $757 for the cost of roof replacement projects at Sherman Elementary School and Riverfield Elementary School and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Testani, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Leclair, Mr. Stark. All right.
Madam Chair, just a quick point.
Motion passes, yeah, it is.
We need to maybe change the.
Yep, that's why I had it wrong. Yep, so I want to thank you for picking that up. I knew there must have been a reason here. So the agenda item for this has the, and Jared, can we make sure we've got the right number here? So the agenda item is, the dollar amount is slightly off from the amount in the resolution. Can you just validate which one is correct, please? Okay. Yeah, and I, and this was, maybe just, we should, and Mr. Andriana, too, maybe a question. I don't, I don't know if the, if the Board of Selectmen inadvertently, you know, let's make sure they voted on the right number and if they didn't, I don't know what the remedy is for that, but.
Madam Chair?
Rate dollars off.
Can I ask specifically, the difference between the bond resolution number and what's on the agenda, is it $8,000?
Yes.
There's an additional item for design work for Holland Hill Elementary School, trying to get a year in advance of that, and it's $8,000, and it's also one of our requests.
It's $8,000, yeah. The, the problem is it's not in the agenda item.
No, I understand, but I'm starting to make sure what, what, is that could be the difference?
So if that's the difference, the actual bond resolution is correct, the agenda item is worded incorrectly.
You just need to make sure.
Okay. Do you want to?
So we'll, so we'll make that change to the item on the agenda.
Do you know what the Board of Selectmen tested?
They passed the proper one, because we, we, I think that's when the, the, in the, in the meetings identified, yeah.
Okay. Anything else we need to do with this agenda item?
Did we vote for the right number then?
What's that? Yes, we voted, we voted for the right number. I, I read it incorrectly because I was reading it from the agenda. Mr. Testani corrected me, so I reread it and we voted on the correct number.
There you go.
All right.
Please pick up, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Get something right once in a while.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Thank you. Mr. Peterson. All right, so we can move on to item seven, nonrecurring capital 20 years. So to here, consider and adopt a bond resolution amending and restating a resolution entitled, a resolution appropriating $3,717,899 for the cost of certain nonrecurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by $100,000 to a total of $3,817,899. This was also approved by the Board of Selectmen last night. The backup materials for this item are posted online, beginning on page 19. For members of the public, the bond authorization in this item was originally approved by this board on February 16th of this year. The original authorization, as the agenda item notes, was approximately $3.7 million, and it covered nine discrete projects that are shown on page 19 of the backup. Project number five, for the tennis center light replacement, was originally authorized for $100,000. And the request that's before us tonight amends that project by $100,000 to bring it to $200,000 and therefore increases the overall authorization by $100,000. So we have Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks and Recreation, here to walk us through the site. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everybody, and I'm happy to be here and answer any questions in regards to this. As was stated, you guys did hear the whole background on this back in February when you voted on it. The only thing that changed here was it went out to bid. We've got two competitive bids within $10,000 of each other, and they came in at about $200,000, so that's where we're sitting now. First question that you probably would ask me is, well, how were you off by so much? And I would love to give you a great answer on that, but when we contacted a company back in February, because again, we do these, I think these lights I've tried to get through at least six times before, and they always get kicked down the road. But I had an updated quote from a company, reputable company. They gave us their price. We've included what we figured labor would be, so we padded that number to get up to the $100,000. And now with inflation and supply chain and everything else, this is where the market is. I would be concerned if there was a discrepancy between the two groups that had submitted bids. One was, you know, $100,000, and another one was $200,000, you know, that would be way too big of a swing. But the fact that these two are both reputable companies, pretty much expecting the exact same product and they're within $10,000, that just tells me that's where the market is at this point. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
All right. Questions from board members? Mr. Walsh?
So when you guys spec down for the $100,000, the company you called for the price of the lights, is that one of the two companies?
So for the light itself, yes, for the products of the light.
And now how much has their price gone up from what they originally quoted for just the light? Now what the light is just gonna cost?
About $50,000.
It went up like $50,000?
In the light, yeah. Just the light alone.
Since February?
Correct. At least. My quick math was correct.
About why that was?
We did bring in both companies, and they're just telling us that it's just the, the, the ability to get the products right now and the steel and everything else that goes with it.
So the, when we did this deal last time, I know you were gonna speak to the tennis place. Where did those discussions come out? How much of the light project are they willing to pay for? Okay, so it doesn't seem like a good time to purchase the lights. It seems as though we should probably wait for this crazy inflation and steel prices to go down in price, and we just waited out. And if it suffers, it's really gonna be the tennis place that suffers. They don't want to play ball, that's fine with me. But why would we go forward and buy exorbitantly priced lights where the price has gone up like 100%?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with your, your analysis there. My only argument would be that the lights are from 1989, right? They are on their last leg. It's a matter of time before they go out. So right now, the tennis companies pay us about $120,000 a year in rent.
Yeah.
They take care of all the electricity, so even the savings that we're gonna get from these LED lights, we don't realize. But we are responsible for the lights as they are the town's property. Anything outside of the tennis courts, we're responsible. So, you know, again, if those lights go out in the middle of the, let's just say they go out in the middle of the summer and now they can't do evening tennis, I guarantee you I'm gonna be back before one of the lords saying, hey, I gotta cut these guys a deal because they don't want to pay their rent now because the lights went out. So you could roll the dice, you know, I, I get it. I really understand where you're coming from.
So the tennis place is gonna be the one getting the savings on the electricity because they pay the electricity?
That's correct.
So they should be incentivized to work with us?
Yep.
But they're not. I'm not voting for this. I'm not being, at this time, being held over a barrel, double the price when it's not even fitting us. I'd rather just limp along for another year, maybe two years, and if we have to deal with something, will we deal with it or give them a slight refund on some of their pricing, so be it. I'm not gonna be spending the town's taxpayers $100,000 going up 100% just because right now with supply chain issues and steel prices, we're anxious. I'm not doing it. So that's my position.
Mr. Matola?
How long is the lease with the?
I believe it goes till 2034. It was, yeah, it was a 20-year lease. They built the tennis center building for us, so that was the first public-private partnership the town had entered into with Fairfield Indoor Tennis. They paid roughly, I don't know, $2.5 million to build that building, redo everything down there for the town. Good deal.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Ms. Marmian?
So if, if one light fails, do all the lights fail?
No, not in the current 1989 version of the lights that we have up there. They're the old halogen lights. So the, like the old gyms where gym lights where you flip them on, it takes 20 minutes for them to heat up type of thing. So no, we've been replacing lights as they go. At some point, we do expect that the wiring and everything will, will fail. And, and again, they're 33 years old, so.
So let's say there is, you know, a light goes out. We can replace that halogen?
And that's what we've been doing.
Okay.
For now, for now.
And so how, what's the cost? What, give us an estimate of what it's been costing us in the past couple of years to kind of replace?
I want to say we're in the neighborhood of around $15,000 in repairs. I can, I can get a firm.
Annually or total?
Annually, annually. The lights are out all the time. We have guys down there all the time.
So $15,000 annually to fix the light?
Correct. The issue will end up being if the wiring goes. That's, that's really where all the expense is gonna come in. We, we knew the light, the wiring will likely go bad, and I, we don't want to be in a situation where we get money for just the light, but don't replace the old 33-year-old wiring that goes with them. So this is, this really is to replace the wiring and the lights themselves.
Do we, when we do the maintenance, are we going in there for the wiring as well? Have we had to address wiring issues? Have we had to address wiring issues?
We've had to replace some of the wires, uh, not recently, I would say last, maybe five, six years ago. Uh, we had to replace some wiring, and we, we contract that all out through an electrician. We don't do that stuff in-house.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing where Mr. Walsh is coming from, because the incremental maintenance, you know, if we have to spend $15,000 versus an additional, you know, $200,000, $100,000 beyond, it may be, if we can hang in there.
This is the same mindset that this board has had for the last six times they've presented this. That's exactly where it gets killed every time, so I understand that, I, I don't disagree with it. I, I think, you know, in the short term, that that is the right decision. In the long term, the light needs to be replaced.
Right.
What's the debt service annually on, on this bond, roughly? $200,000, so this is a 20-year?
Bond.
Bond.
3.5 million, right?
Just back of the envelope?
Very good question, very good question. 3.8 million.
3.8. What's that, Mr. Stark?
About $7,000.
$7,000 of debt service per year?
Times, times 20.
No, I'm just, I'm thinking about $15,000 of maintenance per year. Is exceeding the cost of the debt service, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. So we, so the, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. So the, the, let's see, um, gets 100% of the electricity savings, I thought it was 50% for some reason.
So, right now they pay 100% of the bill.
Okay.
The town reimburses them 50% for our half of the building, the other half of, not the tennis center portion of the building. So the electric bill, if I'm not mistaken, uh, off my head, I think it's about $8,000 a year. So we pay $4,000 from the town.
So we would get none, we, we're not gonna realize any savings?
Correct, because I believe any of the incentives have to go into the owner's name, and they're the ones on it. The same with the solar that we have at the building there too, they get the incentives for the solar.
Got it, so the, the cost avoidance here would be the maintenance of the lights and the risk of additional maintenance on the wires, um, vis a vis, you know, what we would, you know, pay to, okay.
$100,000 plus interest for 20 years, 'cause that's what it's gonna, you know, we're gonna be paying
Understand.
$200,000 bond, plus interest, every year for 20 years.
But, I mean, there's no guarantee, to be honest, there's no, I mean, we don't know what the future holds in terms of, you see, $200,000, you know, uh, I mean, additional, I don't know.
Um, can, I'll just, I wanna, I wanna get to Mr. Curly, but do you have any, uh, did you have any conversations that lead you to believe that prices are gonna go down in the near future?
No, no, and I, I believe their pulse signs are pointing to a recession. I'm, I'm not an economist, I won't, I won't try to speculate on that, but, yeah, I don't, I don't see prices going down anytime soon.
Okay, um, Mr. Curly?
Yeah, a cou- couple of questions, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Anthony, um, I just wanna make sure I understood that last point that you made. It, if the, if there's about $8,000 of electrical, uh, utility cost or expense a year, is the contract that the town has with the tennis center that we just split the bill 50/50?
Correct.
So, if there is savings, so if there is savings and that bill goes to $6,000, then we'll end up paying $3, so we will get 50% of the savings?
You're, you're correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand that. Then the second question I had was, in, in the contract with the tennis center, what is our obligation for maintenance of those lights? You, you mentioned that you're sending DPW down to change bulbs, you're spending about $15,000 a year on maintenance. If there is a failure, do we have to replace it at that point?
I would have to double-check the language in the contract, but the lights are our responsibility. Everything outside of the maintenance of the tennis courts themselves is our responsibility.
Okay, and, and, and.
Everything else.
And, and you also mentioned that perhaps as a, if, if replacing or repairing the lights is not an option, if, like, the wiring fails in your example, one of the other alternatives that you mentioned, if I heard you correctly, is to make a concession on rent, so you don't charge them as much. So, one way or the other, the town's gonna end up bearing some of this cost.
That's typically what I've seen happen when a tenant loses any type of revenue. They come back and they ask for a break on their side of the rent.
Okay, all right, uh, so, I, I understand Mr. Walsh's point, and I totally agree, but I, with, with the idea that we, boy, if the town acted earlier, we would've saved a lot of money in the long run, but I, I'm not sure we're gonna see these, that the cost of this come down, um, and knowing that we've got this type of maintenance or expense associated with keeping these older bulbs, uh, operating, uh, and given that the debt service on the 200, the incremental $200,000 is not $15,000 a year. Um, I think, I'm supportive of this, um, adding this to the, the bond, but I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, yeah, so just the question on the debt service. So we've got a $200,000 bond, it's a 20-year bond, right? So, let me put a straight line to $10,000 in principal plus whatever the interest costs are, right?
I guess about $12,000.
$12,000 a year, and we've got, um, we've got maintenance, we've got, we've got risk. That, that's the question, I mean, I guess, you know, so.
So we might be paying $15,000 of repair work, but we're saving $12,000 from not doing the work, right? That's where we are right now.
If you're.
Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna be bonding it, right? So we're gonna have, potentially, you said on the average about $15,000, but we won't be making a bond payment because we're not gonna do it right now.
Of $12,000.
Yeah. Uh, I'll ask you another question.
May I?
How, how many lights are there?
Uh, 40.
40. How many have been replaced, do you think, during your tenure?
50. Oh, God, probably 80% of them.
Okay, so we got 80% new lights, kind of on the newer side.
Newish.
Newest side, because you said the thing is 30 years old, and some of the 30-year lights are still working, right? 20% of them?
I don't know if they're 30 years, I don't know if any of them are 30 years old that are up there, but I, I understand the point you make.
What's the life of a light?
We've already invested $15,000 over the last couple of years replacing a lot of lights, right?
Sure.
So why not get the value of that? Otherwise, we're basically replacing, last year we did $15,000, we're basically tearing it down and getting rid of all the work we'd already done. I just think that, and, and the point about recession, we, if we really have a serious recession, this stuff's not going up in price. It's going down in price.
Like I said, I'm not an economist, I'm not here to.
There's not gonna be anybody buying steel.
Like, I'm not here to really figure out the economy.
It's gonna drive it down. Same thing with the cost of, of the lights. The company that sells the lights, not gonna sit there and be like, hey, people can't afford this stuff. And then saying, uh, you know, why don't we put this off till the recession's over? So, I think the price is gonna be falling, not increasing. So I just wanna kind of correct the record on that point. So, all in all, I, I, I think we, we, we push forward. And I don't think this is the same, Anthony, as the times where you've come before us. You said six times in previous times, trying to get this money. We approved this money in February. We, 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 we understood it. The problem is, we didn't know that since February until right now, it would go up 100%.
Neither did I.
I know, I'm not saying this, I'm not saying any of this is your fault, but I, I don't think it's a reason, I think everybody in the United States is having to deal with these issues all the time. How, can I afford this car?
Yep.
I thought we could afford it a year ago.
Right.
Until this, you know, inflationary period came along.
Yep.
Now, now we can't afford that car, or do we gotta get a lesser car, or we gotta do something else?
Right.
Or I didn't know housing prices were gonna go through the roof, and Campbells, not a good time to buy a house, you know?
Right, like, like I said, I don't disagree with your point at all.
Yeah.
And as I told the Board of Finance yesterday, it's not my job to sit here and tell you guys, you know, we need to spend this money, right? I'm just here to tell you guys, this is what we need. You guys then decide whether or not the town can afford that, and that's, you know, that's honestly all I can do here. I can only show you what the town's needs are, like I said, I've brought this five or six times, the town needs it.
Oh, I'm not saying.
Whether or not, it needs it this year, or it needs it, you know, three years from now.
Okay, other, um, Mr. Stark, do you?
Sorry to make you repeat this, but what's the, uh, electric? Well, the summer, these lights only operate in the summer, right?
Correct, because they're, they have to bubble up, so.
Four months?
Yeah, it's May, it's May 1st to, like, September, Labor Day.
Okay, and, um, it, the bills, about $8,000 a month, you said?
No, $8,000 annually.
Oh, okay, so, just doing a net present value calculation, your point of indifference would be if these lights cost $130,000, based on the, uh, the coupon on the bond, minus about $1,000 annually of electric savings, uh, versus $15,000 a year for 20 years, uh, at a 3.5% discount rate. And I, I'm with Mr. Walsh, I think the price is gonna come down, so I would wait.
Yeah, I'm not saying not to do it, I mean, I just don't think right now is the time. In, in eight months, the price is doubled. I'm saying, and, you know, maybe there'd be some ARPA money at the end that might be available for $100,000.
One more.
Yes.
How long, if you placed the order, how long does it take to get?
Uh, six, eight weeks lead time?
And then installation?
Installation's four days.
Good to visit it in March or April, it seems to me.
Yeah, the goal would be to have them up by May 1st, once the bubble comes down.
Yeah.
So, we don't have them up by May 1st, then we kinda miss the, you know, summer season, and then we have to wait till the fall again.
Um, Mr. Testani?
Yeah, hey, Anthony, um, just to go back to the bids, just for a minute. You mentioned there were two companies, right? And you, if I remember correctly, you said that both bids had a similar cost increase, right? On the lights, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's correct.
Would they, would it be worth it? Do you think it's a waste of time to try to go back to them and say, you know, the town just can't afford this? Can you either come down or match the previous price, or they're just saying, this is it, take it or leave it?
We can't do that with the public.
Or go back out to bid, or you have to go back out to bid, right?
Yeah.
That's, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have worded it like that.
Yeah, we have to go back out to bid.
Was that, you, would you consider that to be a waste of time, or some money?
Um, no, I mean, it's just time, at that point, it's, I don't, it's not about the money, it's just, it's time. I can't guarantee that the numbers, I can't guarantee that these companies would even come back and say, "Yep, we're gonna bid again."
Well.
I don't know that they'll go down, I don't know that we'd get a third or fourth company to come in.
So, in the bid process, how, were there more than two that submitted bids, but only two were?
Nope.
Only two even submitted a bid?
How long are the bids bid for?
Um, I think it's normally 60 days, I'd have to double check. I don't know if it's ever been any of these, 60 days.
And they submitted them when?
Uh, these were submitted 27th of September, so.
And just a question on the bond resolution, so if we appropriated this money in February, is it, and Jared, maybe you know the answer, is it unusual that we wouldn't have allocated the funding? I, I'm a little bit confused on the timing of the bond resolution piece.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be unusual, because we don't, um, we don't issue the debt for the entire amount of the nonrecurring, uh, authorization.
So that's why this could've been amended, if we so chose, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Okay.
No, I, I agree, I think, uh, like Mr. Stark and Mr. Walsh were alluding to, I just, to me, I don't think it's worth the expenditure. I don't, not right now, and it sounds like you're sort of enjoying replacing the halogen bulbs.
No, it's a lot of fun, yeah, oh, yeah. Tennis players, they really love it.
Mr. Matola?
What the, what did the, I know it passed the Board of Selectmen, was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Okay. Um, the lights that you have up there now, if you go forward with this project, do we keep those? Are those lights, do those lights have any value to be used at the time?
No, they definitely don't.
Do they, do they carve a mound and tape them, it's part of them?
New lights that would be there are LED, uh, they meet the, the dark sky initiative that the RTM requires here. Uh, basically you step off the court and it's pitch black. Um, the spillover is contained to just the court, um, lighter monitors, 10-year warranty on them. There's zero maintenance on the town side, um, they monitor them off-site, so they know when one of the wattages is getting low, they come in, and they can't just replace a light bulb, they have to replace the entire structure of the six lights that are up there. But there is a 10-year warranty.
Tell you, I'd get that kind of light, they'd light, LED lights out all over town. Nice if they knew when their lights were out.
Other questions? Okay, and just one final question, are you, do you think the, um, the comparisons that we've been talking about in terms of kind of the cost benefit are appropriate? I mean, do you think there's sort of more risk there, that we're gonna have, you know, higher maintenance? Or is the, this $8,000 or whatever you've been spending over the past number of years, is, do you think that's indicative of what we're gonna deal with, go forth?
Pretty good idea, that's what we're gonna continue to say, until something catastrophic happens, if the pole just comes down, but yeah.
Okay, so, and the risk of something catastrophic is, okay.
I, I think, I think the risk is low, um, I mean, the lights have been there for 33 years.
Okay.
They're doing their job, it's just a matter of time, which is what I've continued to say. Deferred maintenance, that's.
Right.
What we've been doing.
Right, so we, yeah, I, I hear you, so I think, um.
And, just.
Yeah.
Right, so I know everybody's supportive of the project overall, right? But this is exactly what I talk about when we start talking about the deferred maintenance, we start talking about the waterfall chart that Mr. Papa George was just talking about, right? There's a, a specific pot of money, and you guys know from sitting in that working group that if I bring together this project to you guys next year and say, "Hey, it's gotta be in here," you're gonna say, "No, no, no, we have to do air conditioning, we have to do this," it's a set amount of money, which is why I was very excited when we got it through back in February. So, that's the other gamble that we run, is that it's gonna have to fall into that list somewhere.
Yeah, I, Mr. Walsh though said, you, you did mention the ARPA funds, you know, that could be a potential, I mean.
And I, I will tell you, Anthony, I'm committed to this project, so you bring it back, I'm gonna remember this conversation. I would ask that you, if it does not pass, if you can, it might help this board to see the actual repair numbers you have, five or 10, or a 10-year period, so we know how urgent this is.
I would be one of the questions.
So, if you, if you could put some schedule together about what, what you're really investing, year-over-year actual numbers, I, I think it'd be great, but I'm not gonna forget this, this conversation. I, I'm in support of this project, I just don't, not in support of it when it doubles in eight months.
Understand.
And we're in trying times right now, we're trying to get past it, thanks.
Uh, other comments, questions?
Uh, Mr. Curly.
Mr. Curly, Craig, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Ed, just, I guess this is a procedural question before we get to the vote. It, it seems like we're, we're split on whether to move forward with this or not, but there is $100,000 in this, um, resolution currently, and it's either gotta go up by $100,000 or down by $100,000, I would suspect.
Um, so, yeah, I, I, normally we, we have a process that we go through and deauthorize amounts that are not spent periodically, do you have a different view on that?
No, I would.
Or, or would we just leave this alone for now and then?
Just hearing what the board is saying, um, and the commitment to it, my suggestion would be to leave the authorization there.
Yeah.
Kind of earmark it, and then, uh, we can see what happens in the future.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, Mr. Curly, does that answer your question? Okay, um, other comments, questions? Okay, um, all right. Uh, so we'll put this to a vote, all those in favor of amending and restating the resolution in this item by increasing, by increasing the appropriation and bond authorization by $100,000 uh, to a total of $3,817,899, please say aye. Uh.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, Mr. Curly, aye, those opposed?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Testani, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Leclerc, Mr. Stark, seven opposed abstentions. Okay, the motion fails, one, seven, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Anthony.
Are you saving me from a painful RTM meeting?
Classic. Wish I'd said that last time.
All right. So we will move to item eight, "To here consider and adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution appropriating $24,800,000 for the costs related to the, to uses of coronavirus, state fiscal recovery fund, and the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund specified in Exhibit A, uh, to reduce the appropriations $22,640,000 and revise certain uses of the funds in the project list as ref- list as reflected in the attached amended Exhibit A." This was approved by the Board of Finance last night, can I have a motion to hear this item?
You said Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen last night.
Board of Selectmen last night, sorry. Uh, can I have a motion to hear this item?
Some...
Uh, Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Walsh. Okay, the backup materials for this item are posted online, beginning on page twenty-four, and Exhibit A, that was specified in the wording of the agenda item, is included on page twenty-six of the posted backup. For members of the public, this item relates to an appropriation the board, this board approved a year ago, that was funded by a grant made through the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. The town received approximately twenty-four point eight million in ARPA money, and each of the elected bodies included, including this board, voted on an allocation of that funding to various projects. The allocations were based on cost estimates that were and are subject to change based on actual bid pricing. To the extent that estimates change, the town will come back before the board to ask us to approve transfers between projects. Um, they may ask for other changes, and that's what's here before us tonight. So, I will turn this over to Mr. Schmidt, to take us through this item.
Thank you. And that's a good setup, because the, uh, the crux of this, um, of this request is that there was an increase in the Stratfield Village, um, an increase from what the estimate was, and what was approved by all the, all the boards, the RTMs, uh, as part of the ARPA funding. The increase was about seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so ultimately, that's what we're asking for here. To get there, um, there's a, a couple of other things going on. When, uh, when the ARPA projects, the funding for the ARPA projects was passed last year, um, pretty much the entire amount of the twenty-four point eight million dollars was approved. Uh, there was never, at the time, when it passed the boards, there was one change that was made, which was the, uh, that took off the list, the funding for the performance stage at the History Museum. So, that was four hundred fifty thousand dollars. That amount was never updated in, um, in an official, uh, resolution, so part of this resolution is to officially, to codify that, and to take that four hundred fifty thousand dollars out to, uh, deauthorize that. The second part, um, or another part of this, um, is to also deauthorize two point four million related to the fiber optic network. Uh, this was, this was also approved as part of the ARPA money, um, and this was to allow the town to purchase our own fiber optic network, to connect all the town buildings, uh, in, in addition to the Board of Education buildings as well. Uh, when we went out to bid, the bids came back, uh, and they were, uh, the lowest one was nine hundred thousand dollars more than what we had planned, uh, when the ARPA projects were passed. So, at this time, our proposal would be to deauthorize that funding as well, the two point four million dollars. And so, what you end up with is, uh, instead of having full authorization of the twenty-four point eight million, there's twenty-two point six four million dollars that would be authorized under this.
What was that number again?
Twenty, twenty-two point six four million dollars. So, the, the balance of the funding, the, uh, just over two million dollars, would just be unallocated. And, um, the way we're kind of thinking about that now, is seeing some of these bids come back, and seeing how, how large they are, uh, including this one for Stratfield Village, again, seven hundred thousand dollars more, um, that we would have that as a, uh, a buffer, um, that could be used to, uh, supplement any of the bids that come in that might be over what they were planned to be. Um, so that, that's the, uh, those are the, um, that's the funding mechanism, and what's needed, and, and kind of an overview of the ARPA funding. Mark Barnhart is on, uh, a phone, and if you have questions about the Stratfield Village project, uh, you know, about the scope of it, um, but this was, uh, it was passed as part of the, uh, the court, the project was passed as part of the ARPA funding last year.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Before we move to Mr. Barnhart and Stratfield Village, does anyone have questions about the overall reconciliation of where we were to where we are? Mr. Matola?
Yeah, so the two million dollars that you have out there now, that you said you wanna just kinda keep on the side, I guess, just in case some of these bids come back and need more money. For the, for the amended Exhibit A, where you have all the projects listed, are, are these, are these har, good, good numbers now, but for the Stratfield Village, or are we still waiting for bids and so on and so forth on a lot of this stuff?
Yeah, so it's a mix, uh, you know, they're all, they're all different, some are at different stages, um, some are, are finalized, and we can count on the, the amount that we have there as, because either it's been, uh, completed, um, finalized, or, um, or because it's just, it's the amount that we set, for example, the HVAC funding for the Board of Education, that's a million dollars.
We know that, right.
That's it, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna get that money, and whatever they can do with it, they can do with it.
So, you just wanna be careful, you have the two million dollars that, on the side, just to make sure that if any, if these, some of these projects are maybe, are still out to bid, if they're higher than we anticipated, you're gonna have some of that money to cover those costs.
Right, and I'll give you, you know, some of the examples of those projects that could potentially increase, the downtown Resiliency, that there's the potential for an increase there, uh, Brewster River, um, you know, not necessarily saying that we're seeing increases yet, but they, there's, there's a scope of work that needs to be done.
All right.
And it's not tied to a dollar amount, so those, you know, this, uh, the dollar amount could end up increasing when we get the bids back. Uh, so those, those are a couple of the projects that we could, Perry's Green is another one, um, when we get the bids back, it could be higher than what we had estimated.
Could you, and, once you know what these numbers are, I don't know if it's months away, or weeks, or six months, or whatever, could you, could you use any leftover money for Anthony's lights, the ARPA? Are you allowed to do that? We could do that, right?
We can do that, it has to get approved by the board.
We just have to approve?
Right.
Okay.
Right, so any of that two million dollars would have to go through all the boards.
All right. Okay, that's what I, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna follow up, um, to Mr. Matola's question. So, we had, in our capital working group, there was a summary of the status of the ARPA project, and one of the items we asked to be added, I think is responsive to your question, which is, what is the source of this estimate? Um, some of them are internal estimates, pre-bid, some of them, you know, we have a bid, or it's, or it's a finite amount, like the HVAC number, so I think that's important, because, um, you know, a lot of these numbers have been all over the place.
Sure.
Um, and I, I don't think that's anyone's fault, it's just the environment we're in, but I think it's important, um, to understand, um, you know, the level of risks that's in these numbers, because clearly, I, I think the objective is to not, you know, go ahead and allocate every last cent when we know we have potential risk, right? So, okay. Um, and just for clarity, Mr. Walsh, I know you wanna ask a question, but just so everybody's, I, I had to do this in my head to make sure I got it. So, the, the ARPA grant was twenty-four point eight, we actually allocated twenty-four seven ninety, back when we did it. We reduced the museum stage by, the RTM reduced the museum stage by four fifty, the fiber optic network is reduced by two point four million, add on seven hundred for Stratfield, and that gets you to the twenty-two six forty. So, the twenty-two six forty minus the twenty-four eight is two million one sixty, which is now our remaining contingency. So, just for clarity. Um, Mr. Walsh, you had a question?
Yeah. At our capital planning working group, October seventh, we had a big discussion about that. We had a discussion about it, and we were supposed to get another presentation on it, and we were supposed to have Mr. Kelly there, tell us about the technology of satellites, and how the world's kinda coming back to broadband, and that's the way it's going, and that whole town's gonna be using satellites for, for Wi-Fi, and how the broadband for the town might be done through, through satellites, and we have not had that presentation at all. So, I'm kinda surprised, sitting here tonight, while we'd asked for information, and I'd asked for some specific answers, which I still haven't gotten.
I don't think that was October seventh, I think that was last week.
Last week?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this month. In the last, it, it might be seven days ago.
October seventh.
We were supposed to, I'd asked for some information, you were gonna get it, you were gonna get a presentation from Mr. Kelly, bring him to a meeting, we're gonna have a whole discussion. And now, you basically wanna cancel the broadband and use it for Stratfield, and we have not even finished the discussion. So, if we're not gonna finish discussions on stuff, before we start cutting stuff, I feel going to these meetings is a waste of my time.
Well, that's not actually true, because...
Complete waste of my time. But I'm just shocked to hear that we're having this before us.
Right, but most of it's coming from the stage, and some of it's from the overage, uh...
No problem with the stage.
The lack of the playgrounds coming in less than we had appropriated for. Um, we can still have the discussion about the broadband, and what are we cutting into broadband, like, because we had...
We can, we can still have that conversation.
Correct, the playgrounds were under what, um, we had appropriated for, correct?
Right.
By how much?
The playgrounds were under by about a hundred thousand.
Right, so with the four hundred thousand, for the four fifty, the stage...
Four hundred fifty thousand.
Four hundred fifty, the stage, which did not happen, did not get approved, add the hundred thousand from the playgrounds that were under, that's five hundred fifty thousand, and the appropriation for Stratfield, full completion of their project is fifty?
For the full amount? Uh, the, the ARPA amount would go to...
No, the extra, the overage, uh, the overage.
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand, so regardless, um, it's really not cutting that much into the broadband, Jim, it's cutting a small amount into it. Uh, yes, we're gonna have a, a presentation in our next working group meeting, but this project has been sitting for five years, and unfortunately, it did come in over budget, but this neighborhood has been waiting really, really long time, and we had many, many discussions, we scoped back the project, we had tons of meetings, saying we were just gonna do the four corners and not the full, all the way down, which they originally had wanted, um, we were gonna minimize, you know, scope it back, and then we said, well, we have the four fifty, we have the hundred, we could pull a little bit out of this broadband that's coming in, about nine hundred thousand more, and complete this project for this neighborhood who's been waiting a really long time for it, and just get it done, just get it done, and stop, you know, piecemealing it. And that's really where the thought process was. It wasn't a, you know, screw the broadband, or discussion we're gonna have on it, because we could still have that discussion, um, and if we feel that we can maybe, Dave gives us a full presentation, and we feel we could do something, we can modify that project, and still have something, um, and maybe there's a, there's, something is under, like the playgrounds do, where we can, you know, piece of, that, this is a, sort of a living, breathing twenty-four point eight million dollars. It may be that some of these projects we don't do, because some run so much over, but my administration just really felt like, what was it, a extra hundred and fifty or something, that this was worth doing. So, it's not a disrespect in any way, it's just that we just, this project, we could get shovel in the ground, and there was real concern here, that if we didn't sign a contract to get this done, this project's gonna even be more. And so, that's just where we were coming from.
And I just wanna add to that, because the ARPA funding is not the only possibility for funding, uh, fiber optic. We've had, uh, a conver, this conversation's been going on since, even before I, I started, at least internally, I don't know if it's made, if it wa, uh, made its way into the, into the boards before this, but, um, but there are, you know, if, if, if there's a belief that this could truly produce savings, um, and over a long period of time, then it may be worth bonding to, uh, to fund this, uh, or partially, uh, funding it.
Yeah, I just, I just, I'm sorry, I just wanna jump in, though. I, we had a long conversation about the tennis lights, and it was basically, is there an ROI, you know, do we wanna spend this? This is the same conversation, this is a cost play, it's, we're paying two hundred forty thousand a year or something, what, what are we paying for right now, for our...
The total amount's about two hundred forty thousand.
Two forty for our network cost, and we're talking about spending two point four million as an alternative, right? The two point four million jumped up to three point three million. So, the question is the same question we talked about before, is it worth it to spend and bond three point three million to save two hundred forty thousand a year? Plain and simple, let's assume the technology doesn't change, because Jim, I, I hear you on that, like, who knows, right? Let's assume it doesn't change, is that a, a payback period that's appropriate and, you know, reasonable, is that what we wanna spend ARPA money on, on that? So, I thought we might have a brief conversation about that tonight. I don't think that's too complex, because I think it's a simple financial question as to whether that's an appropriate investment for us to make, um, and I, I think we can have that. But I think what I heard at the meeting was, you know, we thought it was a wise investment at two point four million, now it's three point three million, so it's a different equation, and we're pulling back on it, because I think, I thought you guys assumed it, it wasn't, didn't, the fi, you know, the financials didn't work. We haven't seen that on paper, but that's what I heard. I wasn't as focused as you were, Jim, on the whole Saturday thing, I, I wasn't expecting that to come back, I was, I was thinking of this more just from a, you know, the cost.
Yeah, I also wanted to see the, what the increases in the contracts have been with this company that we've been using, because that all adds up to...
Yeah, the two forty may not stay stable, what are some...
It might be three fifty in five, seven years.
Agreed.
Right.
So, but I, but...
You went to those, the Board of Education, the, uh, you know, the difficulty with, uh, I know Dave provided me with that information, uh, yesterday, um, and the difficulty with it was that it was not, it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison, there was a change from one contract to the next, um, so it wasn't a, it wasn't a, there wasn't a light comparison that we could make to, uh, to know whether or not the, uh, the cost is an increase or not. In addition to that, you know, I would say that it's also, and, and you said this, Mr. Walsh, this is a question of priorities, and to me, this, it's not, it's not always about finding savings, it's about doing what's right for the town, and doing, and, uh, providing a service, and, um, and also the, you know, the risk that's involved. I, I think there, there is risk in, in investing in something like this, whereas, I know that if we can take this money, and we can put it into a capital project, I know that that's gonna, that's gonna be a, a good benefit to the town, without a doubt.
There's also risk involved, um, in this Stratfield area. There's safety issues, and there's also trip and fall issues with sidewalks, there's liability involved with the project, not being done.
And there's lots of ways to fund it. I mean, we can amend our motion later this evening, and take some of our surplus, and easily give you a hundred, we have twelve million dollars, we can give you a hundred fifty thousand dollars tonight out of that, and still at least keep this other thing at play until we figure out what the financing is. I mean, yes, there are different priorities, and I said that the last time. Some of them are for, you know, the police, but their cameras, clearly, you know, we need to do that. There's all sorts of things, and there's certain priorities. Some of the things save the taxpayers money, because we don't have, we're able to play through the police cameras in one shot, and not pay it for the next ten years. Other things, playgrounds, we just pay for right away. To some degree, if we can, if we could see whether this broadband system can save us money, I would like the taxpayers to save a buck, you know, if, if we, if we could. But we haven't had a chance to fully analyze.
Yeah, I just, I do wanna be clear, though, it's, it's not about, it's not, it's no more than two point four, it's three point three.
That's right.
Right, so if we wanna maintain this, then we would be looking at increasing this appropriation to three point three, because we don't have, we don't have a bid for two point four right now, so we are short right now, as this stands. Right, and my plan was to have that discussion at our working group. Right. And then we could have a conversation about, do we think it's a worthy project to, to put some of that ARPA money, and then bond the rest, or whatever, you know, people wanna do. But I think we need more information. I do, you know, this felt so right, Stratfield needs this, the cam over, it's a safety issue, it's a liability issue, and it's an important part of that community, who hasn't had a real lot of investment, um, as far as the construction. Thank you. I wanna, does other board members have questions on this? Ms. Marmian?
I have one question on the Stratfield project, so I don't know if other people wanted to talk about it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess, maybe it's for Mr. Barnhart, but I know that Stratfield Village Association has been very active in... has been very active in raising, raising money over the past several years. They've done a terrific job. Um, what has happened? Has the scope changed, and that's why we're looking at more costs? Or is the price of doing the, um, original proposal that's gone up based on bids, um, you know, the same way other prices are going up?
Right, so the scope hasn't changed, um, and there were some permitting issues, some things that state wanted to do. And I'll ask Mark to elaborate, he's been very, um, involved with this project for a number of years. Mark Barnhart, do you wanna, um, yeah, Ms. Marmine?
Yes. Okay, um, for the record, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development. Uh, yes, the Strathfield Village has been very active and has raised a hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the cost of the project, which is what they had committed to at the outset. Uh, it is a question more to the latter point that you raised, which is, uh, really just, uh, when we put the, the project out, the bid, the bids came in much higher than our estimates. And we did both estimates, both in-house. Our engineering staff, as well as our engineering consultant, prepared an opinion of probable costs. Uh, you have that comparison with the three bids before you as part of your backup. So it was significantly higher. Uh, of the seven hundred thousand dollars in additional funding that we're requesting, a hundred and seventy thousand of it would be, uh, project contingency, which we hope we wouldn't have occasion to spend. But, uh, given the nature of construction, uh, once you get in the road, you, you don't necessarily know what you might encounter. Uh, we thought it would be prudent to include, uh, a ten percent contingency, uh, just in case. So that, that is part of the, uh, funding request.
Okay, that's, um, are you, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Shirley, do you mind if I do a dovetail?
No, of course, please go ahead.
Hey, Mark, this is Jack Testani, how are you? Just, just a question. So the hundred and fifty thousand, you're saying that's the total amount that was raised? I seem to have remembered reading an article that it was significantly more than that. Am I wrong?
Uh, SDA committed, uh, to raise a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which they did towards this project. Um, there is also, uh, an Urban Act grant. Uh, my involvement in the project dates back to about 2019, when, um, we, with the help of our legislative delegation and the SDA, uh, secured a six hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, from the state of Connecticut towards the project costs. Uh, that coupled with the original allocation from, um, non-recurring capital was enough to get us started with design. Uh, we went through a very extensive design process. Um, there were delays associated with resolving an encroachment issue with the state and a private property owner, uh, took some time to, to work out. Uh, there were also a lot of permitting issues as the first elect woman that tested to, that revolved in multiple changes to the design plans to accommodate DOT's requirements. Uh, this does have the DOT's, uh, encroachment permit at this point. So we are confident that we do have a plan that obviously satisfies their, their requirements. But, um, all told, that, that obviously did impact, uh, the timing of the project and ultimately the cost.
And Mark, my, my question was really, I understood the, the other pieces of the funding. I just, the Strathfield Association itself.
One fifty.
Uh, right, I understand it's one fifty. I just, hadn't they raised more money than that? Or, uh, they hadn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they've been doing fundraising-
They basically donated whatever they raised. Um, is that fair to say?
I think they've been doing fundraising throughout. I, I don't, I don't know the exact nature of all their finances. We did ask, uh, whether it would be feasible, uh, for them to contribute additional dollars toward the project. But in all honesty, what we're talking about is, is, is a relatively small amount that they could kick in. Um, you know, thousands, thousands of dollars. So we thought that was probably not the best way to go.
And what's the timing again, Jared, on the ARPA funding itself?
It has to be committed by, uh, December of 2024.
Okay, so we have another-
And then spent by December twenty-sixth.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, it's, I, I'm sorry, can I ask, no, it's, it's a lot of what we've been talking about. We don't know if the cost will come down in a year, but we can do this now. I mean, it makes sense to do it now, so.
And you, and you're not, fiber optics is still gonna be under consideration and we got another trunk of money coming.
We're gonna discuss it at the working group. Dave's gonna give us the ins and outs and the details on it.
And that's the group Mr. Walsh and Lori are on and, 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 uh, keep us updated.
Mr. Stirk?
If you watch our videos, watch our videos, I'm sure you'll love it.
Scintillating. Yes, yeah. Mr. Stirk?
So is, is the entire two point four for fiber optic being redeployed elsewhere for that? Or is it just keeping it at two point?
It's not being redeployed elsewhere. It's being removed from the list for now. And, uh, it's being removed from the list, and that's why the total amount of this appropriation is, declines by a little more than two million dollars. Because we're taking, we're taking off the two point four million, we're taking off the four hundred fifty thousand for the stage, we're adding on seven hundred for Strathfield. So net-net, that, um, the total appropriation declines by two point-
And we, and we should probably leave detailed discussions of the ROI on fiber optic to another time.
Yeah, I think so.
We're taking that off the list before we discuss it?
Yeah.
Why would we, why would we be taking it off the list?
That's the, that's the proposal. That's what's on the agenda.
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
If it's not on the list, we're not discussing it in our group. I mean, there's no discussion about it. If it's not on the list, why would we be talking about something that's not on the list?
No, we're absolutely not talking about it at the working group.
If it's not on the list, we're not talking about it. It's either on or it's not.
I've run the meeting.
Yeah.
You can do it everywhere. If it's not on the list, then we're not gonna be talking about other things I'm talking about.
I don't know what list you're talking about. Um, I think this is an appropriation list that it's not gonna be. But that doesn't mean we can't reappropriate it again. The ARPA funds were designated for whatever many projects we ended up all voting for. Um, and then the remaining money, if we don't, if it's not being appropriated right now, because it came in at such a higher amount than we all agreed to vote for and, um, voted on, this money sitting there, that doesn't mean that our group can't have a discussion after today's, that we could say, okay, yeah, we wanna take that pot of money that's now sitting there that was gonna be for the fiber optic, and put it towards an appropriation that may be, uh, partnering with bonding or something, to do the work. There's always ways to continue to do it, but we need more information on it. I, I don't view fiber optics being completely taken, taken off as a discussion we're going to continue to have.
Kevin, you did a back of the envelope with your calculator on the other. What's the break even point for spending three point three million for something that costs us two hundred forty thousand a year?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to check the two hundred and forty thousand, because I remember when you put that really great slide deck out last year, it said that the, our release portion of the annual land expenses was three hundred and forty-one thousand.
I, I believe that was before the, uh, the discount that the Board of Education receives.
Okay, so two forty is the better number. And then on the new network, um, the annual expenses, fifty thousand for maintenance? Or is it more than that?
Uh, we've, we've, in, in the analysis that we had done, it was, I think we put it at ten thousand, ten to twenty thousand a year.
Oh.
But I think the point was the project was listed at two point four.
Understood.
And no, that pro- that price is no longer available.
Understood, that's why, I mean-
Yeah, but the two point three is your almost equal options.
Ms. Stirk, do you have any inflationary amount on the contracts we have at this be-
I haven't, yeah.
Everything that's going up at price.
It goes up every five years. Do you know about how much?
We don't know, and, and we're, we're in this inflationary time period.
Yeah.
So I would imagine that we would have to put a five to seven percent inflationary.
Yeah, but then you'd change the discount rate on the cash flows too. So, I mean, I, I don't know what that would amount to, but, oh, oh, you know-
Those are neck and neck.
Yeah.
Like the, that could have really good ROI. And I'll tell you, I mean, I, I'm not an economist either, but I listen to economists multiple times a week in my job. And, uh, one economist in particular for the Association of Elders last week, uh, who, who has a pretty good following, thinks that the, all this public spending, um, through ARPA and then the, uh, the Infrastructure Act last year, that's obviously gonna keep prices fairly firm on cement, aggregate, asphalt, that kind of thing. But, um, you know, one reason why this, this fiber optic got so expensive is, is, uh, because of Cisco. If you, if you listen to Cisco's earnings calls there, I mean, they can't get product out of China. So everything's inflated here. And I think this, this and, and lighting are areas that do probably come back down again.
I don't think we're, I don't think the, the two forty's not high though. That's not, has an increase for us, right?
I don't know, over-
Are, are we at a high, i- is this?
I don't know.
Okay, I think we're, we, we should, we should look at the analysis. I mean, I, I think the point was, and, and the first elect woman made the point. I think one of these is a cost play. So to your point, Mr. Walsh, does it save, does it save money? You know, within a reasonable, does it have a reasonable ROI or not? That's the question on this. And that analysis has to be done. You know, the other project, the Strathfield project is in community enhancement, beautification, safety, all these other things. So it's not quite as easy to, to tag that to. It's, it's something different. And, um, anyway, that's where we are. So I think we, we all agree that we need an analysis on the, that the analysis that we thought we were signing off on for the two point four has changed. So we're taking that out of this. That's the proposal. We want, we're gonna get a new analysis. Except we get a new analysis and it continues to make sense financially, then we, um-
Right, and it's only a small amount on the fiber optic piece. And again, we can still have that, the full discussion at our working group meeting. And if we feel it makes sense for us, um, and it saves money, then we can have that full discussion about how we wanna figure it out.
Why not use surplus out of twelve million dollars? That, that's the, that's-
For what?
Why not, why not use, why not use a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this huge twelve million dollar surplus?
What do you mean, for the fiber optic?
Yeah, for the extra amount.
But the fiber optics amount, we're only taking a hundred and fifty K out of it. But the price has jumped nine hundred thousand from what the town board approved.
I must say we'll definitely do that, that's something we're gonna-
But we still wanna have a full discussion with Dave on it in more detail at the working group. And we do have till twenty-four to spend the money. We don't need to spend it right now. I don't believe it's, I think because, I think it's getting mixed up with this project. I, I look at them as different things. We're, we're supporting the Strathfield project for safety, uh, and, and all these other reasons. This other project does not mean that it cannot go forward. It's just, it's a more detailed discussion that needs to be continued to have. They're different.
Okay, so if the analysis comes back and says at our next meeting, if you expect to be at the next meeting, so you guys are gonna have this all analyzed by the next meeting. And I'd like to see our contracts that we currently have before the next meeting. So that we'll hang right now.
The next meeting's not the one we're gonna be in.
Yeah, so there's plenty of time to analyze.
So this is a working group analysis.
So if you can just like both contracts, the Board of Ed one and ours right now, because I'll obviously have the increase on it. There's yearly increases or it's a flat fee. And we'll also be listening when they expire. So if you can supply that to our group, that'd be great.
And we could also update, give us a full breadth of the project, so we can have a full understanding of it in more detail. Um, what does it give us? Are there other options in some of these?
If that project falls off, then we can start spending money in other areas, or at least some of those options.
Depending on that analysis.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't like to see it not on the list, because basically, to me, it's like killing it.
I think you're gonna make sure it stays on the list in the working group.
Not really not. I'm gonna run the analysis real quick and then I'm gonna spend it other places as fast as possible, since we have time.
Yeah, we should all discuss it. But I mean, it's not off the list that we're gonna be discussing on the working group. That's for sure.
Yeah, I, I think Jared said it, you know, there's priorities. You know, if there's a really compelling cost savings that comes out of financial analysis, then that's, then you think about that. If there's a minor cost savings or whatever, there may be other things that are more important. So I, I don't know the answer, Jim.
It's important for the group. We've got a lot of different people there that we're gonna have.
I guess my issue is more of that. We're about to vote on something that takes something off the list. And we don't even know what these numbers are at all. On something that the three bodies, three bodies put it on there.
Yeah.
Three bodies put it on there.
They put it, we put a lower number on there.
And I don't think that the three bodies are getting a complete analysis of why all of this money now is coming off and now gonna be allocated to at least one project to start with, and potentially others. To me, all three bodies put it on there and wanted it done.
Well, all three bodies are gonna vote on this, Jim.
Yeah, but they're not getting full information.
The Board of Ed's already-
How much did you guys talk about it for a second?
Talked about it.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see how much the Board of-
And they understood that we were, the working group was gonna be looking at, you know, this analysis and talking about the project.
Okay, I think you owe it to the RTM then tomorrow night. We had a very healthy conversation, had a very healthy conversation with them. And give them a lot more than just saying, oh, we don't wanna do this. Thursday, whenever the RTM meets, whenever the RTM meets. But I think you just, it deserves a healthy conversation there with a lot of the information that we talked about tonight and how our working group is still doing it. But we're taking it off the list.
I think we're taking-
And we haven't done the analysis.
We're taking it off the list at two point four million, because it's now nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, but we have no analysis to show whether that's worth it or not.
In my opinion, we're trying to use a small amount of money out of that to try to get an actual project started and on the path to getting done.
Okay, but I think, you know, I get it. But we're really kinda taking something off to get something else started, because the priority is-
At least we're taking off, we're taking some of the money off the original appropriation. And I'm not sure the three bodies would have maybe agreed if it was nine hundred thousand more. Who knows?
Okay, um, other questions, Ms. Leclerc?
Well, I, I'm thinking the same way Jim is. And I'm okay with using the four fifty and the hundred thousand savings from the playground, but I really don't wanna take off this two point four. It just, I feel like it's too early that we stay there for now. Um, and so we're only short a hundred and fifty thousand. So are there grants out there that we could apply for, or can we take it from our, um, surplus from this year?
Well, I just wanna clarify one more time. That two point four million dollar project is no longer an actual project. It's nine hundred thousand more, and we don't have that in ARPA. So that project, that two point four million dollar project is no longer available.
It's three point three.
Optional. It's done. If the town work, if the working group decides after a presentation that they want to continue on with whatever two point threes left in that project.
With the three point three million dollars, we have to decide on funded at that point.
The money, and they wanna ask the boards for nine hundred thousand in bonding to pair with it, then that's, but this actual two point four million dollar project is no longer a project you can go to the store and buy, because they're not gonna give it to you.
But so many of these projects have multiple sources of funding. This is a piece of that funding for that project. So then if you came back for the rest of it, it's not like we're laying out from the town's own pockets, the full cost. We're getting some of it from this ARPA funding.
We are, can I-
And that does make a big difference in how you look at a project.
Agree. I just wanna go back to what I, I sort of said at the outset of introducing this item. There are a lot of estimates on this ARPA list. We are gonna revise this resolution, I'm confident, a number of times. Because, you know, many of these items are gonna change. There is nothing that's gonna come in exactly as estimated. We're gonna have maybe a couple more if we're lucky, like Parks and Rec, where they come in less than estimated. We save money and we can figure out what to do with that later. But any of these that come in above are gonna have to go back to the boards. And so I don't think this two point, this is a do or die. I think if we have the discussion and at three point three million, the fiber optic continues to make sense, then it's a matter of, you know, you, you can take X amount of funding from ARPA, you can bond it. I mean, if the project makes sense, it makes sense. If it makes sense and it's a priority, then it should be put before the board for consideration. And, you know, I don't, that's, that's, I, I think we're gonna continue to revisit this resolution, is, is all I'm saying. Because all of these, all of these numbers were high level estimates from a year ago. And none of them are, are gonna be exactly correct.
So is it an option that we can just reduce the amount in this appropriation by a hundred and fifty thousand and leave the item on the list?
So what I would say again, um, is that item no longer exists at that price.
I understand that.
So you can take a hundred and fifty thousand and, and cut this Strathfield project money, which then we won't be able to do it, because we won't have enough.
No, no, no. I'm saying take the four fifty, the, that wasn't appropriate.
But again, the fiber optic, we can't have, we can't do the fiber optic, because we don't have enough money.
In its current state, but you can come to us for the balance at this point in time.
I think it's important for the working group to hear the analysis from Dave to make a educated decision if we even think it's worth it. And so, and then crunch numbers and all of that.
Okay, but I still think it should stay here, just like Jim Walsh was saying.
Okay, we should, we should vote on this then. I mean, I, and I don't want to cut this off, but I, I just, I, there's obviously some mixed opinions. So, does somebody want to make a motion to, to change the schedule? We can, we can do that if there's an interest. I, I don't know. I, I will say for the record, I'm in favor of just moving forward with the motion as it is. I think it's cleaner. I think we're going to come back anyway. We can reallocate this fiber optic money if we want to. If others have a different view and want to make a motion to, um, I, I guess the way we'd have to amend this is we'd have to specify that the backup materials, Exhibit A, that this refers to should be different. We can vote on that if people agree, um, and, and then move forward. But I, I think we should probably try to bring this, unless people have different views on this, should probably try to bring it to a vote in, in some fashion.
Can we get a sense of our board about whether people would be willing to use surplus to pay for this? Because if there was a sense that we were.
Yes.
We might be able to get past this and say, we're not in favor of using that portion of it. But we're willing to spend whatever and then we would like to spend 150,000 of our surplus money.
I think we, I think we have to, we have a long discussion on the use of surplus. And all, all of the surplus has been allocated to various things, including replenishing fund balance at this point. So, I, we can ask the board, assuming everyone's reviewed the materials, if they would rather put money here instead of have it go to fund balance. I think that's fine. Um, and then if that's the sense of the board, we can work on changing this language and vote on it. Um, and if that's not the sense of the board, we can vote on it as is. Does that work?
Yeah, I guess that works. Because when we go through that discussion, people went out and agree on the way of the money being spent. And there might be extra money still sitting around.
For surplus?
Yes.
Yeah, I should, okay. Um, so just maybe sense of the body, um, is, I'll just ask her, who is, who would like to, who's supportive of this resolution as it is? Uh, Mr. Curly, Mr. Stark, Ms. Marmian, Mr. Matola, Ms. Charlton. Okay, and who would like to revise it? Uh, Ms. Leclerc, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Tesani. Okay. Um, I would suggest then that we vote on this item, if that's okay?
That, that's fine. I mean, I, I, I will say for the record, I support the Straffiel project. I don't know, I don't, I don't support before we've completed our working group's.
Understood.
Project, which is still before us and still witnesses have to come before us and more data from the administration and analysis that this, that that project for the broadband, um, network be taken off the list.
Understood.
So, for those reasons, I can't vote for the Straffiel thing. I, if I could find another funding source, like later tonight, if there's 150,000 more surplus that's sitting around, I would gladly give it to the Straffiel.
All right.
So, I just want to make my point now.
Understood, and thank you. Um, all right, I will put this to a vote if that's okay? Uh, all those in favor of amending and restating the resolution in this item by increasing the appropriation and final, uh, am I on the right one? Hang on. No, I am in the wrong one. All those in favor of reducing the appropriation, 22,640,000 with uses as outlined in Exhibit A to the published materials referred to in the agenda, please say aye. Uh, Mr. Curly, Mr. Stark, Ms. Marmian, Mr. Matola, Ms. Charlton, those opposed? Ms. Leclerc, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Tesani. Okay, so the motion passes 5-3. Thank you. All right. Uh, so we can move on to Item 9. Uh, to hear, consider and act upon a resolution approving the transfer of the fiscal year 21-22 revenue surplus as set forth in the printed agenda. Um, I'm not going to read the full motion unless anyone is lucky to. It's provided in the deal. Okay? All right. This item was approved by the Board of Select last night and have a motion to hear this item. Mr. Matola, uh, seconded by Mr. Tesani. The backup materials for this item are posted online beginning on page 30 of the posted backup. Uh, for the members of the public, just as background to this item, uh, when there is a budget to actual surplus at the town's fiscal year end, that surplus will become part of the town's fund balance unless there's an action taken to spend or designate the surplus in some manner. To the extent the surplus arises from revenue, that's in excess of budgeted revenue, the mechanism to spend or designate that surplus is different than when the surplus arises from expenses that are under budget. So, specifically for revenue surplus, the mechanism involves amending the original budget, budgeted revenue, revenue to increase it by the amount of the surplus and then appropriating the surplus amount. Um, so because that action amends the total appropriations in the budget, it requires approval from all of the bodies that approve the original budget, meaning the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the RTM. So, that is why we are voting on this separately from the overall surplus. And, um, uh, that is why this particular item also requires RTM approval after us. So, um, Mr. Schmidt, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
All right. So, number nine, uh, and kind of as companion, but number nine is reflective of what was presented during the quarter and, um, more or less, and accordingly reading, the, uh, what the surplus of FY22 stands at approximately 12 million dollars. Has not been audited. So, it's not a, not a final, final number yet. What we're proposing here is to take the, there are two pieces to that. There's the 3.6 million dollars of surplus, which is related to the spending side of the budget and 8.4 related to the revenue side. And so, in, in item number nine, what we're proposing is to, uh, uh, take some of these surplus sources that are referenced in the table there and that those will be transferred to the, uh, the remediation account. And the intent is to hold that in advance until we come to the boards with a plan for how that money is going to be allocated among the different, you know, our, our proposal would be to allocate it among the, uh, different uses, including things like Penfield Pavilion and whatever the ultimate decision is for the construction of Penfield Pavilion, the remediation at Penfield Pavilion, uh, and the general remediation of the sites around the town. So, ultimately, this is, it's going to be 8.4 million. It'll be held in that, in that account until we come before you with what, what we think that, that plan should be.
All right. So, let's, I just, uh, since this is a separate voting item, let's just focus on the 8.4 million for a moment, this revenue surplus. Questions on this item? From board members?
Are we going to go through each of the? Sorry, so what do we?
So, this, so, um, so we are voting, we have a separate vote on the revenue surplus and the expense surplus. So, this item that we're discussing now is solely the revenue surplus and the proposal to take that 8.4 million and set it aside or designate it for various, um, issues related to remediation and Penfield. And Mr. Schmidt, I'm looking at the, I think this is page 31. You have shown the proposed allocation of this money to, um, the various pieces and what's remaining. And if I'm reading this correctly, if we do what you're asking tonight and we allocate this 8.4 million to remediation and Penfield, uh, that would fund the total estimated costs except for 6.8 million. Is that correct?
Right. So, the, the plan would be, again, this, this is just kind of putting, putting it in a holding place.
Right.
And that the.
But just in total.
The amount for the FY22, the bulk of it would go toward Penfield construction, the, the way that we have laid this out. But again, that's, that's going to depend on, um, you know, we, we have our proposal for what we think should be done with Penfield in terms of the construction of it. We know that there are different opinions, so there will have to be additional conversation about that.
But based on your current, I, I'm, I'm looking at this specific schedule. So, based on your current thinking, if we, if we approve this 8.4 million revenue surplus to go into these accounts, that money, along with money that's previously been set aside, ARPA money, et cetera, would leave us needing to bond 6.8 million to cover everything.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
Based on the estimates that we have.
Totally understand. We all know about estimates at this point. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Matola.
I just, I understand that. When do you think you're going to come to the town bodies with respect to Penfield funding? Any idea?
November.
Oh, so like a month away.
Okay.
So, based on the proposal you gave to the, the, all the town bodies?
You did something in August, I think it was, right? Okay, yeah, November, all right. Thanks.
Other questions?
Just for clarification, I'm sorry.
Nothing.
In time, so when you say November, beginning, middle?
Our November meeting or?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
November 1st.
November 1st.
Get moving, Tom.
Yeah, exactly. Cut yourself a little slack, Tom.
Okay.
Thank you, Jared.
Other questions from board members? All right. So, seeing none, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor of approving the transfer of fiscal year 2021-22 revenue surplus as set forth in the printed agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Tesani, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Leclerc, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly. Okay, the motion passes 8-0. All right. So, let's move on to Item 10. To hear, consider and act upon a request from the Chief Fiscal Officer to approve reappropriations and transfers of surplus from the fiscal, for the fiscal year, or from the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Have a motion to hear this item. Uh, Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. Tesani. Uh, the backup materials, um, for this item begin on page 31. And again, uh, for members of the public, this item relates to the portion of the year-end surplus that arose from expenses being under budget. And unlike what we just voted on, transfers of expenditures between departments and reappropriations, which are basically carryovers to the next year, do not increase the total appropriations that were previously approved. And so, those transfers and reappropriations require a vote from this board, but not the other elected bodies. So, I know, uh, we have a number of individuals here, um, to speak to the reappropriations and the transfer requests. Jared, do you want to kick us off and walk through this at a high level?
Yes, I'll, I'll do the overview and, uh, Kate, join me here.
Oh, are you doing the transfer part?
Yeah, we're just going to do an overview of that.
Okay.
Going into the back of the proposal. So, uh, and just, you have pages, uh, 31, 32 that were originally in the, in the backup.
Yes.
That was replaced by, um, a document that was sent out by John Carpenter today. There were a couple of changes to that.
And the posted backup has been updated as well.
Right. So, the, what this, what we're essentially doing here, and if you look on page. There are two, two schedules in there. And what was sent in, in the amended version would be the second and third pages. And so, one is a page of reappropriations and the other one is a page of, um, of transfers. If you remember, I think it was last year, there was some concern about the order in which these were, were done. And so, we put them all, we put both of these actions into the same item. And so, the, uh, transfers, you can see the, the sources of the transfers orders, uh, surplus funding in those accounts that would be transferred to the list of the Board of Finance, Ms. Richardson, debt to these human resources and, uh, and, uh, transfer out for page. And then the reappropriations would be on the, on the other schedule. So, these would be accounts that would be reappropriated to FY23.
Yeah, so this kind of gets tricky, a little bit technical with the, the accounting piece of this. But the, the summary sheet that I think Brenda's going to go over with Jared later, there's, there's a number of different kind of, um, spending that they're looking to use the surplus on the spending for.
And that's the 317,000.
That is, that's a piece of it, yeah. So, there's a transfer piece and a reappropriation piece. The transfer piece is saying, what departments have excess budgeted money that would not spend? And we could then transfer to departments that we may be looking to, um, move into 23 to spend. For example, I'm just going to, I'm just going to look at, if you look at your additional funds transfer sheet, let's just look at the, in the middle of the page it says Board of Finance, 16,000. So, there's two pieces to that. There's the auditor contract piece, um, for the actual audit. So, it went out for bid. We need an additional $10,000 in fiscal 23 as a result of those, those bids that came in. So, 10,000 of the 16 is related to, um, the higher price on the auditing fees for fiscal 23. 6,000 is for, or maybe I have it backwards, but, um, for the purchasing policy, which we know, I think, needs to come before the boards to say we need, um, some additional funds for the purchasing policy that's still kind of going on. So, the Board of Finance Department as of fiscal 22 has no money in it. So, we're, we're already at our budgeted amount. So, in order to say, oh, yes, we believe we should be spending, um, this 16,000 in fiscal 23, we would need to then increase the budget for the Board of Finance Department for 16,000.
And then carry it over.
And then, as a result, if you look at the reappropriation page, you're going to see 16,000, which then increases the budget in fiscal 23 so that it can be spent in 23. So, it's kind of a two-step process. Now, some of these departments, for example, Human Resources, um, have some excess funds. So, you're going to see a 65,000 number on the, on the funds transfer because they only need 65. But in, in fact, all of this spending for 23 gets approved, their budget needs to go up 130,000 for fiscal 23. So, on the reappropriation piece, so it depends on if those, if those departments had excess money, if they need a transfer or not.
Got it.
And then, just one last little piece for the, the paving piece, um, the 780 and the debt service piece, those are not going to be spent out of the general fund in 23. Those are spent out of the debt service fund and the capital nonrecurrent fund. So, we don't need to reappropriate here. They get expense here and then they move into different funds. So, there's a couple of different things going on with the technical pieces, um, if all of these expenses get approved, which goes back to, I think, the summary of what all these pieces are. So, um, maybe once we, you guys figure out all these little pieces, then I could figure out if anything needs to change on the transfer or the reappropriation schedule depending on.
Got it.
So, let's spend it.
So, and if you, you know, if that, if that part of it is clear, what I'd like to do is go through a few of these individual pieces of it. The, uh, the ones that I think.
On which sheet, the reappropriation sheet?
That are, that's on the, the.
The summary.
This one that's marked as needed.
Got it.
And the team.
Yep.
Um, I think will be quicker than others. There are some, some pieces that I think are going to be quicker than others. So, I could, I could go through those and then we can save some of the other ones for, for after.
Okay. Let's do it.
All right. Okay, so the Verip payout. This was, um, if you remember in the Verip, uh, agreement, the Verip plan, that there were payouts to each of the retirees. There were lump sum payouts of $5,000 each. And so, this was, uh, we had to update the 23, we're having to update the 23 budget to add this funding into it because it originally wasn't included in there. And we didn't have, uh, any contingency that we could pull it out of.
So, this was missed in the budget?
It is being put into the 23 budget.
Right, we, we, okay. So, we should dock Frank's pay for this amount, right?
I'll take, I, like anything in my department, I'll take the hit for it, especially for this one.
Growing, growing.
This was not very, this wouldn't have been very obvious to Frank, um, you know, because it's not, not something that was easily seen. it's not, not something that was easily seen.
It's a one-up, sir.
No, understood, but just, just to be clear, had we remembered it, the $78,000 would have been part of the fiscal '23 budget that we passed.
That's correct.
Gotcha, not fiscal '22, fiscal '23, right? Got it, okay.
Question, did you say it was $5,000 per one?
Yes.
Then why is it $78,000?
And so there was...
Eight thousand or seventy-five thousand?
There's three thousand for five, yeah.
Okay. Is that AD1?
No, so that gets, so seventy-five.
Three thousand, three thousand. Three thousand additional for the benefits. Right.
So if you just want to, oh, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not on the, on the transfer sheet because the retiree benefit org has enough to cover the $78,000. So you're not going to see it on the transfer sheet. You are going to see it on the reappropriation sheet because that needs to come in and be expensed in '23.
So we're carrying over their extra budget into '23 to pay for that?
I just didn't need a transfer out of another department to, to fund that. So everyone is a little bit different, so that's why you're not going to see it on here, but you are going to see it on here, so that's the $78,000.
Excellent. All right, the Board of Finance budget, we, we have talked about this, the, when we went out to bid originally, you know, we didn't know what the bid was going to come back, and as it turned out, it was the, the only bidder was the, the same company that we're using now. And so the, the contract for the auditor was this $6,000 more than what we had put into the budget.
Were we carded under our personal policy that we kind of do it, put a draft bid? Or can we just come and do it?
Five years, I think?
Five, yeah, five years.
This was the fifth year?
Yes.
And we got one bid from me incumbent, so.
And then the...
Well, they don't think they can ever raise it more next year if they're the only game in town.
Well, we got a five-year contract, so that's good.
And based on conversations with, with PKF O'Connor, the purchasing policy, they are going to need another $10,000 to completely work for that.
On top of this, Jared?
No, that's in the part of the six, I'm taking one on it.
I've got it, yeah, sorry.
Let's do H. Smith Richardson Utilities. This was another one that we're having to add. This is covered under a contract with, with the restaurant, with Boca. And we needed to add in $30,000 that was not included in the, in the golf courses budget this year.
Are we responsible for all the electricity up there?
Yeah, there's a, there's a split in the contract.
With the restaurant, yeah.
I want to say fifty, I want to say it's 50/50. I, I don't know what the percentage is, but we're not responsible for all of it. It's just they, Boca gives us payments and they just get that against the expenditure.
Okay, and there's a lot of extra usage up there this year, right?
I don't know that.
The officer was.
I think it's just been, it's maintained a high level. I don't know if it's, yeah, more than traditionally, but compared to the last year.
But we don't have a lot of history going, right?
Well, that's the other question.
As Mr. Curly knows, what, what date did it go, did we start using it?
Got to ask the frequent flyer.
Two years.
Yeah.
Muted.
It's the second year.
What was the...
March 21, I think? I'm sorry, the golf course, the clubhouse, when was it start to, it got put in use of March of 21, was it?
Yes, yeah, spring, uh, spring of 21, yeah.
So we don't have a lot of history, but this is what we're estimating, the water and electricity.
So the new budget numbers for next, the next budget will be adjusted.
For '24.
For '24 will be adjusted, correct?
By, by $30,000, right? That's what I was saying. Or more.
I'm on a roll, so I'm going to, I'm going to do it, I'm going to try another one here. The, the last item on that group, held for future use, $780,000. Our, the administration's proposal to the RTM, the one before the RTM, was to include the $780,000 in the paving budget. So to take this, this money out of surplus and put it into the, into paving for this first round of what the councilman said. We are, I, I think what we're, what we, what we had talked about with the chairwoman was to set, kind of set this aside in the, as we've done in the past, in this debt service reserve account, to, for future discussion.
Yeah, so that we could have a more fulsome discussion about paving and not jam it into this evening.
So that's what that's doing. The rest of these, I think, we'll, we'll wait on and have, have another, another... Which one?
The debt service.
The transfer to this.
You mean the, the transfer?
The transfer.
Oh, yeah, so the, okay, so what we did with the very bottom part of this, we, there's $2.5 million total between those two items. And we were, the idea was that we were going to keep the, the fund balance percentage level throughout the two years. So what we could have done, to look at it in reverse, we could have taken the $2.5 million for '22 and just put it into the fund balance. What that would have done is would have driven up the, the fund balance percentage. And then the following year, next year, you would have seen it drop off. And so to, to level things out, what we're proposing to do is to, you know, keep it at this level of 11.32%. And the way that we would do that is by taking the 20, for the '23 fund balance, we would put that into, again, the debt service reserve fund.
The $500,000.
The $500,000, right, $500,000, put into debt service reserve fund. And then at the end of the year, at some point, this would get, would fall to fund balance, would ultimately fall to the fund balance for, for '23. And then what, what's remained, what would remain for '22 would be $2 million, which would fall to fund balance, last year's fund balance. And that would, that would keep it level for 11, at 11.32%. And it just, I think, I think it's going to look better and the message to regularities would be, would be for...
So just to, just tonight, just to ask a clarifying question. So the $500,000 is, is basically treated as a transfer, so that ends up being an expense in the budget. And then after all these other proposed transfers, what's left of our surplus is $2 million. And so that flows into fund balance. And then the $500,000 that we've put into the debt service, we would propose to, in fiscal '23, take that out of debt service, put it into the general fund as some sort of revenue, but not spend it, and therefore it becomes fund balance, part of the fund balance in '23. Gotcha. And then, since that's only $500,000, the fiscal '23 fund balance, which we didn't, we didn't budget any surplus, right?
That's right.
So unless we, you know, have additional surplus, our, our fund balance number would, would ratchet down a little bit in, in '23. Okay, gotcha. Do you want to take questions on any, on any of this now?
Yeah, so I, and before, before we do that, to summarize what's on this page, which is, and I'm sure you, I think you spoke to this earlier, this essentially accounts for about the entire $12 million in estimated surplus for, for '22, between all these things. The revenue surplus, which you did in the last item, and then these which are on the, for spending. And then, so if there, if there are no questions about that, then I think there are a couple, there are some presentations that we'd like to make on some of the remaining items that are in this, in this list here, being registered voters, the social worker for police, and the HR positions.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Who's the most tired of sitting in this room?
Well, you have some for public comment.
You have a chair, you have police, you know.
They're, they're...
Yeah, I know, she's supposed to.
Sure.
Hello. So, we're before you tonight because over the last several months, the detective youth services has been bringing sort of a alarm bell to me regarding the lack of support for youth offenders in our county. And it's a combination of things, and obviously Captain Wyatt, Detective Beth Leach can speak more closely to this, as can Julie G. Sorry, Julie. The justice system not taking cases, leaving youth with no consequences, a whole host of different things have been going on. And they've, they've asked, they've met with me quite a few times, asking for some help here with our justice review board, our juvenile justice review board, and all the other things that they do. So Julie is the Human Services Commission Chair, or President, or Director, and Captain Wyatt and Beth Leach, who all were co-pleas in these areas, came to me and said, we, we have a problem. And, and we've talked about it at length, about the different things that they're experiencing and problems, and it just seems, you know, obviously they don't like to come and ask for a mid-year transfer for a position, but it seemed like a really important item to ask for. Because obviously we have at-risk youth who need additional assistance, and we have mental, people with mental health services that need additional assistance. I'm going to hand it over, who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Thanks for having us, Captain Eddie Wyatt with the Fairfield Police Department. I oversee our field services bureau, which is responsible for our patrol division, detective bureau, our school safety program, and our crisis intervention program. And it's my deep affiliation with the crisis intervention program that ties me into the social worker initiative. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read through our proposal, and the majority of my proposal applies to needs in adult mental health services. And then I'm going to segue over to Detective Leach, and she'll talk about the juvenile review board. So the Fairfield Police Department proposes that there are multiple benefits to the agency, mental health consumers, and community at large by employing a full-time licensed clinical social worker, I will refer to that as an LCSW, paid for and supervised by the Town of Fairfield and Fairfield Police Department. Such benefits include increasing services to the Town of Fairfield, specifically in the areas of mental health and addiction services. The main objective is to increase consumer access to timely mental health and/or addiction intervention, thus providing more complete and thorough responses and resolutions to behavioral health calls for service. The long-term positive collateral effects include, and are not limited to, a decrease in the frequency and intensity of behavioral incidents, decreased recidivism by repeat consumers, minimize potential for injury to all involved or bystanders parties, minimize use of force incidents, and the inherent potential of negative effects of such, and minimize potential for agency and town liability. So a little bit of history, the Fairfield Police Department implemented its unique crisis intervention team program, which we refer to as CIT, in 2011. The model was recognized as progressive and received national recognition when it was published in Police Chief Magazine in 2015 under the article Fairfield Life: A Crisis Intervention Model. The Connecticut Alliance to Benefit Law Enforcement often utilizes our CIT officers to present our model at cable CIT certification treatments. In keeping with this progressive nature of the program, as early as 2012, we have discussed the benefits of employing a full-time social worker to enhance the CIT program. This was not a popular idea at the time and did not gain traction. However, we adapted by closely partnering with local mental health agencies and facilitating their ability to ride along with CIT officers in the field. This approach has laid the foundation and enabled us to be ready to receive a full-time town employee at LCSW. In reference to House Bill Number 6004, Section 18, an Act Concerning Police Accountability, this act requires all Connecticut police jurisdictions to enter an evaluation period regarding the benefits of utilizing social workers in the field. The Fairfield Police Department has been engaged in this practice for several years and has observed firsthand the overall positive benefits of these partnerships. However, with mental health calls for service rising dramatically, our past and current practice of intermittently borrowing a mobile practice clinician from one of our community partners does not adequately fulfill our goals and obligations to the Accountability Bill and to the community. Further, several of our neighboring agencies have employed at least one, sometimes two, full-time embedded LCSWs in their police departments. The Fairfield Police Department should never be perceived as being behind in our approach in mental health. A couple of stats for you that I pulled, our mental health calls for service, our CIT engagements comparison from 2017 through current, in 2017, we had 44, in 2018, we had 65. In 2019, we only had 22, that's a typical COVID dip that we see in a lot of jurisdictions. 2020, 62, 2021, 96. And January 2022 through current, when I first ran these numbers two weeks ago, the number was 446. When I ran the number last week to present to the police commission, it was 468. And when I ran the numbers yesterday, it was 477. So there are several reasons why this number has dramatically increased, aside from the national spike in mental health incidents occurring in the general population. Since January of 2022, we've, we have revitalized our CIT program in several ways, including training six new CIT officers, implementing a more detailed tracking system, and establishing the Fairfield Police Behavioral Health Network. The FPVHN is a think tank made up of liaisons from a variety of local mental health agencies. These initiatives have helped us to better identify mental health issues co-occurring with criminal violations and incidents of public disruption. That said, there is likely a high percentage of underlying mental health conditions that have gotten unidentified. While CIT officers are trained to recognize behaviors consistent with a variety of mental health disorders, they do not in any way possess the credentials to make a diagnosis. Thus, an undiagnosed individual or lack of disclosure of a diagnosis results in our inability to track and address an issue as a mental health call. This is a major gap in the process that can be, can be remedied by employing a full-time LCSW assigned to work with CIT officers. Fairfield Police Behavioral Health Network, that's what I refer to as the FPVHN, and the Juvenile Review Board, this is going to be my segue over to Beth. The FPVHN and JRB are tremendous resources for our mental health consumers and juvenile communities respectively. However, these programs would be far better leveraged if coordinated by an LCSW. Having LCSW coordination and oversight of these programs among their primary responsibilities would ensure we were maximizing program potential and efficiency. The level of investment in our community would better, would be better achieved if the LCSW was employed by the Town of Fairfield. With the FPVHN, we meet once every few months and we continue to grow the network. What amazes me each time in our discussions is the vast amount of resources out there that we at the police department aren't even aware of because it's not our world, but a social worker would be aware of these resources and programs and would be well-versed in leveraging them. And that's the perfect segue into the role and function with the JRB. We look at the JRB as a three-legged stool that has to be properly balanced. One leg is the town's youth services program, which falls under Parks and Recreation. One leg is the juvenile justice system, which includes its own restorative justice practices as well as our representatives from the police department. And the final leg is the mental health function with its diversionary programs, which requires a social worker with indefinite knowledge of these resources and the right connections to manage the mental health aspects of the program. Thank you.
Can you talk about what the JRB is?
Sure.
I didn't prepare anything. So the juvenile, on Beth Leach, I've been with the Fairfield PD for 25 years, most of my career working with kids, so I'm very, very grateful to be able to do that. But we've seen crime change in Connecticut in regards to juveniles in those 25 years. Initially, crimes that kids were committing, naughty kids, need to adhere more to the rules, things got serious, then you send them to court. COVID changed a lot of things. Our juvenile justice system in Connecticut has really made a huge push to decriminalize juvenile crime. They've closed any facilities where kids are being locked up. We've raised the age, starting in 2012, it used to be everyone under 16 was a juvenile, go to juvenile court, and then that raised to everyone under 18. It's treated like a juvenile. Now, between 2018 and '22, I work very closely with Bridgeport Juvenile, Juvenile Court, and we're part of a pilot program where they're turning more and more back to the community. They don't want to see kids locked up. COVID really kicked off juvenile crime being more of a mental health issue. So we do still have those naughty kids that are, you know, just breaking rules because they're bored. But the majority of crimes that we're seeing in Fairfield involving kids is often a family in crisis, mental health with parents, oftentimes mental health starting with kids. And it really truly is an opportunity for the community to step into a family in crisis. The juvenile justice system is saying, we're not taking these crimes anymore. They started a pilot program last January where they screen every juvenile arrest we make. We started the juvenile review board to take minor offenses... We started the Juvenile Review Board to take minor offenses like shoplifting, possession of alcohol by a minor, maybe a push and shove, breach of peace arrest at the schools, more minor offenses, no one really getting seriously hurt, some stuff we could send them off for community service. The Juvenile Review Board is made up of volunteers all over town, Rotary members, people from the school, but the founding members are Fairfield Park and Rec, which is our Youth Services Bureau, and then the Police Department. It really shouldn't be run by the Police Department, it needs to be run by the community. The idea is to take a juvenile that commits a crime in town and send them to this diversion program to shield them from the court process. We're saving them from having any prosecutors, any judges, any detention center learning their name. And that was all pretty, running really well, 2014 until now, but now court is not taking domestic violence arrests, a child punching their mother. They want the juvenile diversion program to handle that. Two brothers committing, getting in a fight and injuries, possession of drugs at school, they will not take until at least a fourth or fifth offense is documented. It is written in our new legislation in Connecticut that officers must give a verbal warning to the first possession of marijuana by a minor. Like if they have drugs at school, we can't arrest them, we're not allowed. We also have kids of a certain age that court will not accept the arrest. If an 11-year-old commits a serious physical injury, I don't even want to talk beyond that, but then we can't send them to court. Court will not take an 11-year-old. Fortunately, we're not inundated with 11-year-olds committing crimes, but we have to have things in place because obviously an 11-year-old committing a serious crime is a mental health issue. So I just got so excited when Captain Wyatt started talking about this, getting a social worker involved to help the adults in town and partner with the police. It's just a perfect tie-in to get them involved in our Juvenile Review Board, get them involved with our Youth Services Bureau out of Park and Rec. Because Park and Rec handling youth services is very valuable still because they have a lot of tentacles out in town for community service or other alternatives for the kids to do as a consequence for, things like that. But we need that mental health piece. We need someone that understands more than me, like I can't, I don't know where to send these kids sometimes, you know, go clean the fire truck, you can only do that for so long. Like we need to get them the free services, the programs, we need to have someone following up. That's kind of where we're getting lost right now. We can send them, say, we know right now our Youth Services Bureau is paying LifeBridge to take these kids for free therapy right now, but we just don't have the ability to follow up and see, is this working? So that's where I see this social worker, you know, it's not a huge workload, the juvenile stuff, but it's going to make the biggest impact because how many times do we say when an adult kills a cop, when an adult or a young adult goes into a school and does harm? We say, why didn't we see it sooner? This is our opportunity to see it sooner. When we're doing the push mom and get a breach of peace or disorderly conduct, we can get Fairfield Mental Health Services involved with them then and track them and follow up and have a person that can talk to the police that are responding to that house at 2:00 in the morning and be a bridge to get them to mental health and circling back, circling back. Because this is not a one and done. We refer them to therapy, doesn't mean we're not going to see them again. We get the frequent flyers over and over. So I hope that this is something that comes to fruition for, because the community needs to be responsible. The court is saying, Fairfield, handle your kids. So that's where I see this being very, very helpful. I get excited, sorry.
I only have a little bit to add. Julie Markov is the Director of Human and Social Services. Few things that I just wanted to make sure, the highlight was that Detective Wyatt, Captain Wyatt, has started the Behavioral Health Group. And before that, we met with a group of stakeholders to discuss how to best handle these cases and these kids and these services and social services with the police. Right now, we, Social Services acts as a recovery group, you know, kind of, we don't get, when we get a referral from the police, we get that a day or two later and people are not compelled to address anything with us. We can call and say, we had a referral, police came out, how can we help? You know, can we come out and visit? They can say no. So it's very difficult to get that follow-through. On that stakeholders group, and I'm sure I'm going to leave people out, we're Mobile Crisis, Social Services, Child Guidance, CITs, Department of Mental Health Services, Operation Hope and Protective Services for the Elderly. All these professionals who deal with kids and adults every day in a crisis were there to have a say in this. And it was very important for us to hear from them and also to have, and to compare it elsewhere, on who we're all seeing. I think this is an incredible opportunity for the town, for continuity of services, to have somebody who's in the Police Department, not necessarily going on all the calls, but being available. That person, I suspect, won't be wearing a uniform, certainly won't be carrying a gun, and will assess on the scene or shortly after to see what kind of services are necessary. It's critical. It's a very different look than the officers who are trying to just make sure that an area is secure, safe and de-escalated, then what happens? You know, how quickly can those next steps be taken? And that's having an LCSW on-site and able to handle that quickly. So I really hope you do support it.
So to recap that, you know, when we all came together and they were just talking and expressing what they just expressed to you, obviously, this concerns me. And I asked them to go look at other towns too, or towns too, and other towns do this. And they coordinated all these different groups and there's one person, this person, who is checking in with Julie, checking in with Captain Wyatt, Detective Leach, and keep making sure in LifeBridge and making sure the referrals are done, making sure everything is happening so nothing is slipping through the cracks. Because they're all doing this in addition to their regular job. And as Captain Wyatt illustrated, it's becoming much more, many more cases than they have had in the past. So I think this is an important, I wouldn't come to you and ask for this if I didn't think this was important, for protection of people who need this protection and for our people who are on the ground doing this work to have that support and to make sure that we don't have these liabilities because this is a big liability.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for being here and appreciate the insight you provided. I know I have a number of questions, but I'll open it up to the board first. Mr. Matola?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. So if you arrest a Bridgeport youth committing a potential crime in Fairfield, do you have jurisdiction, would this program cover that child or that would be a Bridgeport issue?
Right. So everything gets sent to court? Court would send that out to the Bridgeport Juvenile Diversion Program, which is called RIASAP. There are well-oiled--
I know that, yeah. And so why does, why would this licensed clinical social worker, a couple of questions? That individual would work out of the Police Department and therefore would be, would that person be supervised by the Bridgeport, I work in Bridgeport, by the Fairfield Police Department? Is that, who would supervise this person?
I think ultimately it would probably be me because of my ties with the Crisis Intervention Program.
Okay. And would this individual do ride-alongs with police officers at the court?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's--
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Marmian?
Yeah, so just to follow up on what John was saying, so this person would be in the Police Department Union or this person, how, so my question, I'm looking at Julie, like who's, you know, Health and Human Services. Has there been any thought of housing the social worker in her department and then she would report in? Because she's a social worker, not a police officer. It would seem that it would make sense to house that person in a department where there are other professionals. So that's one question, but related to that is I'm confused about the role that this person would play. The person would be doing ride-alongs, but also coordinating and following up and perhaps referring this person to therapy, following up on how the therapy is going, try to reduce recidivism, et cetera. So it's really two roles, right? It's resource, it's understanding the resources that are out there for that youth. So again, I'm kind of looking at Julie, like, and you said that other towns house this person in a Police Department, but it would seem that it would be, I don't know, why the Police Department--
I think we can both probably get into different parts of that question because about a year ago, Julie and I started meeting to try to brainstorm what this would look like. And I think between the two of us, we agreed that it made more sense legitimately to have them house at the Police Department for a lot of reasons. One of them being, they would need access to our computer systems and that has to happen within the Police Department. We kind of look at the Social Workers Day as coming in, logging in and seeing all of the cases that we refer to them. And they need CIGS compliance training to access our records. So that's probably the main reason why we need them there. But then again, like just the familiarity that they have to build with the CIT officers that they're going to be working with most often, I just think that connection is better handled that way.
Right. The only thing I could add, I completely agree with that because they, you know, just to be in the same building and to be able to have those conversations, we are removed and our social workers are part-time, so it's kind of hit or miss who the social worker we'd be sitting with or, you know, and we'd then be leaving to go to the Police Department. In terms of the professional supervision that an LCSW would require, we would have to contract out for that because the Police Department doesn't provide that kind of professional supervision for the licensing and neither do we. So either way, they'd have to get the professional licensing subcontractor somewhere.
Okay. Thank you. Are you? Mr. Tesani?
Yeah, thank you. So, hi Julie, how are you? Just to ask, get back to that point, just for a minute, wouldn't you already hire someone that's already licensed? That's the idea, right? Licensed clinical social worker?
To this edition?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a requirement in LCSW. We don't require--
Oh, I'm sure, I got you. Okay.
We require domestic--
And then on the finance perspective, sort of getting to Ms. Marmian's question, the, so if you look on your presentation, right, under the PETA designation, there's a salary range there, right? And unless I'm reading this wrong, the number's not close, right?
Is that a half a year?
It's half a year. Thank you. That answers that question, okay. So, I mean, speaking for myself, I'm in total support of this. I think a lot of people know that I have a son that's both a former officer and one that's in a, works for a substance abuse halfway house. So I certainly understand. To get back to Sheila's concerns, maybe not concern, that's the wrong word. On the supervisory part, I know you're talking about it, you're thinking about it, I just know from my experience what a police officer goes through for a background check, as an example, would be different than a Town of Fairfield, typically different than a Town of Fairfield employee. Would they go through a police type of background check? Would it be, you know, a lie detector test? Would it be neighborhood checks? How would we, how would you differentiate how this person is qualified versus a police officer?
Well, I think it goes back to the union effort that they're going to be affiliated with.
Okay, so you have to comply by whatever the union--
Right. There is a background check, I couldn't tell you what the details are, I just don't know. It's--
It's under PETA, so I don't, I mean, HR could answer, but they're going to be, so are they under PETA typically?
Right. Would the PETA requirements, so Captain, you made reference to this person having access, and I understand it, to the Police Department's computerized system, right? So would, to get into that system, it's only accessible now, right, through an official Police Department employee that's gone through all those background checks we've been talking about. So would the PETA requirements be sufficient to have them be able to access the system? I guess is what I'm asking.
There's a separate set of requirements called CIGS that they would have to be complying with in order to access our, our--
And is that allowable under PETA? I just didn't want to create--
You would negotiate it.
I can answer that from Kathleen Simpson, I'm the HR Director. And I can answer right now, under that, to have access to that, to that database, you have to get trained and you have to have access. And you can do that under PETA, make that a requirement, get that training. Dispatchers have to have it, DCF workers, the social workers at DCF have that access. It's limited, it's accessible. But to answer your question, it would be allowable because it would be a qualification to make--
As part of the job--
Yes. And the, also the job, I'm sorry, the background check does include a thorough background check, like we as printer employees and sensitive, safety-sensitive positions, it's not a thorough, obviously, it's the police officer. But they do the criminal background check, they check references and things like that.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, it was great.
Thank you, Mr. Tesani. Other questions from board members?
Mr. Walsh?
I'm in support of the petition, but I just have a couple of questions for Detective Leach based on your presentation. So I was surprised to hear some of the things you were talking about and what the court was pushing back and things like that. Where do they stand with violent--
So they have not shared with us the screening process. I meet with juvenile probation supervisors twice a month in a Zoom meeting and other towns have asked the same question, like, do we get to see your screening process? Like what? And they will not share the actual criteria. Some of it is, have they been arrested before? Is there monetary damage with physical assault? I don't know what their criteria is. I can tell you the big change I've seen as of January 1st is that we are starting to take domestic violence back, like they're sending that back. So I wouldn't call that serious physical injury. I've not seen, actually, I had to fight pretty good to get court to take one where it was a fistfight and the kid, the victim, sorry, the victim received some serious head trauma. They were trying to send that to our diversion program and I said no, you know, like, look at this history. I added more documents and more history back to court and they said, okay, yes, we'll take it. So we're on the edge there. And, you know, that concerns me. And we need to, you know, be prepared to handle cases where kids are hurting each other and the courts want us to handle it in our community.
Where do they stand with allegations, obviously we tried, but, or even convictions of use of a weapon, such as a knife or a handgun, whether it's just been brandished or used?
At this point, anything involving a weapon, I've never seen come back where they say we're not taking it. So so far, it looks to me that court is taking anything with weapons involved. The concerning part, when you start taking, saying trial and allegations, you know, if we make an arrest, we have enough evidence to make the arrest. But yes, it normally goes down the court process. So when I've asked the question of court, like, if we don't feel comfortable taking this case, probation, juvenile probation, what's the alternative? If you won't take it and we feel like our juvenile diversion program is not appropriate, where does this case go? And they said, you know, we're trying to find some other services in your community for you, but, you know, we're, they're turning them back to the community.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, somebody gets arrested as part of something and they have a knife or a gun on them, handgun, how is it being prevented from that child just being released into our community to be able to bring them into one of our schools?
Oh, yeah. That's a huge concern and I'm right on board with you. I've not seen them not take a case with a weapon again. So like, we're not seeing those come back. But what kind of services are those kids being offered? That's behind closed doors through the court process, like that's not something they share about. I have to give juvenile court this props because with all of these car thefts and stolen vehicles and high-speed chases and weapons and vehicles that we've been talking about to the community for the last couple of years post-COVID, court has made some changes when it comes to really serious juvenile offenses, like stolen cars, like weapons. They have made changes to take those in next-day court dates, they are taking those very seriously. So I have to give them props where that happened. As a reaction to that, though, they're saying, we're going to give our full attention to these serious crimes, you guys handle the stuff that comes from. So I, the message I'm getting is take care of your kids because by the time they come to us, we're transferring them to adult court, that's the issue too. If they're 15, 16, 17 with guns and car stolen, they're going to adult court, it's getting transferred. So all their anonymity, all their protection is gone. So that's, that's too late to help that kid. So it's on us to help them before that.
Okay. Unluckily covered the stolen car situation because it's been a problem in our town.
Yes.
And it seems to happen consistently. I wasn't sure whether this was like a catch and release program and that's why it's continuing to happen.
Right. They've given us that, they've given us more access to kids' backgrounds also, they have a probation officer that's available to us 24/7, so that if we're putting a warrant together to try and have court hold the child, we can get some history. And then they're seeing kids rather than us wait two weeks for them to show up in court, they'll do it next day.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
And that has to do with, you mentioned this pilot program and things like that. Has there been any statistics released on recidivism? Because the kids know that they're certainly not going to, it's not going to court, so it's just going to you guys to--
I mean, I don't know if you really want me to speak freely--
Have them watch a fire truck or something else like that.
Yeah.
So have they done statistics on the changes that have happened and to, where they're pushing stuff back on you and the kids know it's going to take to the fifth, sixth, eighth, tenth time doing the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Or is it high recidivism?
Yes, and the numbers are very ambiguous because if we send something to court and they screen it to where it's not a juvenile arrest, it doesn't show up in the numbers. So even though we have the probable cause to take the child, you know, the numbers are very skewed. There are a lot of the same kids over and over and over again. Like, our guys that deal with these stolen cars, like between Bridgeport, Trumbull, Fairfield, we're all sharing pictures and descriptions and, and that's how we make arrests. And everyone works so hard to get these arrest forms and then court goes, just going to give them some program over here and the numbers don't count and they'll take six stolen cars and smoosh it into one case. And, and it's all private. I mean, I don't, I don't even, I'm not, we're not privy to a lot of the stuff that goes on behind closed doors at juvenile court because that's the benefit of juvenile court is that kids get to mess up before they turn eighteen and it's private and it's tried to be managed because when they're eighteen, they're supposed to be, you know, fresh start. So the numbers are, are very skewed. But we see the same kids over and over again. I mean, there are kids in town where I'm like, the J R B will not take this case. This is the child's sixth arrest. And, and I say, keep sending it to court, make them pay attention. This is a red flag. I'll call and follow up and give a synopsis of six, seven, eight cases and say, please pay attention, like mandate some programs here. And, you know, it's a battle, it's a battle to try and, but they're being pushed. In my opinion, my opinion, juvenile justice is being pushed to keep the numbers down.
Well, I appreciate the information and I appreciate your hard work despite the law and court processes you have to deal with.
Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. None.
Hopefully this, this is a little.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Um, other questions from board members? No?
Just one quick question. Um, Detective, I just, there was one question I had at the beginning. You talked about the amount of time. You didn't think there was enough time needed because I was wondering, I guess, how much work on the actual cases you think the social worker will be doing?
Yeah. I mean, when I, when I weigh our numbers with how many kids need these kinds of services compared to the numbers of adults that need these kinds of services, the amount of time they're going to be spending on juvenile cases is substantially smaller than what the adult population is needing help with. But I would link those in that a lot of these kids at risk, their parents are, are, we're going there to, their parents, so.
So will the social worker be dealing with the parents as well, not just, okay? And then from a preventative standpoint, again, I know from the experiences I've had that the school resource officers often will be able to, to hear of or, or kind of detect a potential issue. So it sounds like perhaps from a preventative way, they could work in conjunction with the social worker to try to get someone before they start the arrest pattern.
Yeah.
So is that something you, you're kind of building into the, to the program?
Yeah, and that's why both of those divisions fall under my purview, the school safety unit and the crisis intervention program. And I have oversight over both of them, so there's a lot of overlap.
So how would you, how do you sort of project figuring out the return on the investment for this? Is it less arrests? Is it, I just want to get an idea of what your expectations are and how to measure this.
So one of the expectations, or probably the, one of the biggest expectations we have is the rate of recidivism. And I can tell you from experience, anecdotally, we had one case where we have forty-one contacts this year with the same person. It was about the same number last year. And we see two-week lulls in the activity. And those two-week lulls come from when we borrow a mobile crisis social worker who engages with that person and actually convinces them and connects them with impatient.
A therapist or whoever, I O P or something like that.
So, and that's, we only get that benefit twice a month for four hour blocks. And we just, it's just not enough.
Yeah. Interesting.
Another one I visited my office. She did push up.
So can I, can I ask one other question?
Sure, yep.
So just, you mentioned you asked them to do kind of an analysis of other towns. So is this, Fairfield won't be a model. They will be looking at what has worked in many other towns. Is this what other towns do? Bridgeport has social workers employed by the police department, Trumbull.
Yes, so I can tell you.
Give us some idea of what.
So Branford, Milford, Knottetuck, Norwalk, Norwich, Stamford and Willimantic have them, Trumbull is in the process. They said it's looking good for them. Branford got back to us to really describe their model to us and it's very similar to what we want to do, which is to have a full-time embedded social worker at the police department Monday through Friday. That, this particular person's hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which makes sense to us. We like that idea, too. And they go through their case management. They do office work, but they also ride along with the C I T officers. They can respond to a call on request if needed for bereavement or for intervention. And that's basically the model that, that we've been planning for since 2012. And just, it's unfortunate that we've, we've always been a model with our mental health resources. So it's personal to me that other jurisdictions have beat us to it because we always like to be the model. We've been the model for school safety, we were the model for C I T and really wanted to be the model for this as well. So now we're playing a little bit of catch-up.
Thank you. Other, other questions from board members? I had a couple, but I think everybody covered them. And I was, Mr. Tesani asked my last one, which I was trying to understand. Detective Leach, you talked about kind of the percentage allocation between adults because we've been talking a lot about youth, but it sounds like most of the time it's really for adult mental health services. But there is a tie-in, right? So I don't know if that's eighty-twenty, like, is.
Oh, that sounds good.
Okay. And then just one other quick question. I was astonished by these numbers that you put up. Are these apples to apples or was there some change in reporting that, that, how did we go up more than five times in terms of the number of calls in a year?
Yeah, so a lot of it does have to do with our improving ability to identify and track.
Capture, okay.
But it also, it's also kind of frightening realization that when we look at the lower numbers from years before, we know they're higher. But, but I was just doing some research and some of the things that are cited, continued trend of choosing outpatient over inpatient care, continued deinstitutionalization, economic factors, post-pandemic issues, growing prevalence of social media validation, seeking a false sense of reality kids are getting from social media, politically charged situation being broadcast 24/7 on every outlet. And it's really a combination of all of those things.
Yep. I mean, I would say that regardless of how, you know, even if you're doing a better job capturing it now, you know, close to five hundred calls so far this year and you don't have, you know.
And we only have six C I T officers and this is, they're not a unit. They're patrol officers who have taken on extra work because they've gotten that little bit of extra training.
Captain, just to dovetail on that real quick, where some of those other communities also see a similar increase this year?
I don't know if they have quite the tracking system that we have, so I don't know what their numbers are.
I just would be curious to find out.
Yeah.
You know, maybe that might be worth double checking it. So, you know, we want to keep the social worker here. So, for a long period of time.
Absolutely.
So I'm not having them inundated with.
Give her some encouragement.
If possible.
Right.
Goes back to some documented measures we were talking about as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other board members have questions? Okay, so we are not, we're not voting on this item individually. We're voting on this as part of the overall transfer. So did we public comment? I'm sorry. Miss, sure, yeah. So is this Ms. Jay?
Loretta J.
Loretta J, okay. So I know you had tried to call in before and I apologize that we missed you. So please go, please, if you could state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Loretta J over at one sixteen Rolling Ridge Road. Thank you for this opportunity, particularly out of order. So I just want to say that I, to follow up and clarify my, my earlier email. I think that the social worker within the police department is excellent and I fully support it and I think that the team made a very good presentation. I was glad to hear that the J R B will not be housed in the police department, but it will be within parks and rest. That's very good to hear. And, and I think that, I mean, obviously, the captain and Detective Leach have made excellent presentations in terms of the need for a police officer within the depart, I'm sorry, social work within the department. I wholeheartedly agree and support that. So in light of, in light of that and a discussion with the first elect woman about, about ways of working together to continue to build upon and grow this, I have to be supportive of the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay. Pardon me?
No, no.
All right, so we are going to, so we will vote on this as part of a broader item. So I don't know if you guys want to hang out. You're welcome to, but thank you very much for being here and.
Thank you for your service.
Um, yes, thank you for everything that you do.
Future, I'll look for.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Schmidt, which item should we, are we going to move to next? Nope, we have a couple more. We have register and we have H R.
H R.
H R next.
Okay. Ten p.m.
This is early for us.
Not for a full week.
Wait till the budget season.
We like to be there.
This is why I didn't want paving on the.
We're just getting one drop there.
Run out of here.
We have a lot of negotiations and contracts to my task force. This is, yeah.
Well, welcome.
Well, thank you. I want to introduce Kathleen Simpson, who is our new H R director. How long have you been here now?
Um, four and a half months.
Four and a month?
Almost, yes.
So obviously, we had this discussion during the budget season when we announced to the initial staff for H R. And we went through the whole presentation of the reasons why we wanted it. And I remember the board saying that, you know, you get a new H R director, come back. And so I'm, I'm back.
You're back.
And we still have the same problems and with a new H R director tackling them. So then I'm going to hand this over to you.
Well, thank you very much for having me here. I really want to say I'm very grateful and, and I really do enjoy being here. It's been a great honor and a great opportunity. It's a great time to, to work for, work with and everyone's been very helpful and supportive. And despite that, there were a lot of things that may be addressed in H R. My background is that I've been doing H R and labor relations for over thirty years in different roles for the state of Connecticut. The chief negotiator for eleven ninety-nine and the corrections officer is doing, I was director of labor, H R for the criminal labor. I worked for D C F, public safety, different roles. And I worked, I worked with John, I know, the city of Bridgeport as outside council, opportunity to work inside the city of Bridgeport doing labor relations. Most recently, I worked for the city of New Haven as the director of labor relations. And then I did a stint with Governor Polis recently to do their, their chief, their chief negotiator for the state. They just got collective bargaining. So when I got this opportunity, it was a great, it was like, it's a great, and it's been very exciting. It's also been very challenging and stressful in many ways. One of the reasons I took this job is I was, it's very stressed to me, the town was looking for, and the first elect woman was looking for accountability and compliance, which is very important. And H R not having accountability and compliance costs a lot of civil liability and also creates morale problems and other things that you can appreciate. So having looked at right now my, our staffing needs and what I'm seeing, we need, H R is woefully behind with modernization. We're trying to look at our H R S systems to make sure that we're compliant with payroll. One of the biggest challenges from my end is payroll when the, when it first comes in because we have that part and we partner with finance and making sure that we don't have errors, mistakes and we don't end up with liability for, with the Department of Labor or with people also not trusting the fact that their paycheck's been improper. And making sure those systems are, are going to be working well. Happy to say we just hired an assistant H R director. Thank you for that. I didn't have to, it was already in place, which was great. He's, I mean, he's been here five days and already he's been a big change, especially with that payroll piece and the H R S piece and making, shoring that up for us. So that's one area.
Just to clarify, you filled in the risk management position.
That's two as well, yes, I'm sorry. He's also doing the risk management, which I'll get to, but.
He filled out position, it was already there.
Yes, sorry, yes. So going there and look at what we have and what we need to do. And one of the things that I know that this, our, the H R function, we don't, we do, which is unusual, we handle FOIA for the entire town, including Board of Ed, which is unusual. It's about twenty to thirty, I'd say that's probably low end of requests a month. And they think it'd be quite, quite voluminous. And they are hugely time-consuming and, and they're important because transparency, but as people know, if they know they can get something electronically, they ask for more and they ask for them because they have emails, they want every email that anyone sent through to, to various parties. It's got to create a legal review because you have to make sure you're not giving out something that might, might result in breach of confidentiality, someone's tipper writes, something like that. So it's, again, it's, it's important to have it and you don't get a lot of time. You're supposed to respond in four days. You can say yes and they'll ask for a thousand pieces of email and someone's got to go through them and redact as possible. And if you get a, you know, if you have some, something in, and even the police department, they do a lot of their own, but if you get a challenge because you denied it, you have to go before the Freedom of Information Commission. And for a town attorney to do that for hours is really just not a good, good way to use those resources. So I was looking at the position and started with that with paralegal. Because we have the town attorney kind of like that relationship because we don't have in-house counsel or in-house attorney, that makes good sense, I thought, for having that. And also, we get union requests for information. So we get a, it's called a M E R O request. We have to, we, under the M E R O, the Misorable Employees Relations Act, the union can get even more information about employees that maybe the public can't. So it could be even more, a wider scope. The other thing we're finding, too, is that we have a big component where we have to deal with discovery requests and handle litigation pieces, which, again, a lot of work, which, which, you know, you get discrimination complaints and also we have, which segues into risk management. We're responsible, you know, it's not just employees, with workers comp, but, you know, I, I get the complaint where, you know, the, the town's, you know, there's a pothole or something, or someone tripped on the stairs and then they have, they want to get information and H R has to gather that and also monitor the risk management piece. So that's another piece where paralegal will be greatly helpful and also to the town attorney in terms of using that asset as opposed to having the H R director going through that process with discovery. Certainly, my eyes will be on it to make sure, luckily, I'm an attorney that helps and I've done litigation, so I can assist with that. The other thing that paralegal could really help with the risk management process and helping tracking and helping with also workers comp, the data entry and also following up. Our carriers are great. We have P M A and K R M A, but you really have to be on it because they, you know, if you're not, people might be out there languishing on workers comp entry and it goes on and on. And once we're on it and looking to say, hey, we want to make sure this person gets back, what are you doing? It falls apart and we don't have, I don't have the ability to do this. The other thing that the paralegal would be very helpful with would be also help, we have employee misconduct, allegations of employee misconduct. I've had to investigate myself several. I can train people to do that. I can do them and they can take anywhere from twenty to forty hours to properly investigate and make sure the person gets their due price, due process rights, their union rights, making Making sure you are gathering the information properly. Making sure you're working with other agencies like, it could be the Workers' Comp Fraud Unit. It could be the State Attorney. It could be our Police Department, because there could be a parallel investigation going on. We've had that since I've been there. And it's, and again, it takes, it takes time and effort to do that. So paralegal would be extremely helpful with that, why I believe we get, at least gather the information, research. Research on collective bargaining for contract negotiations are just day-to-day type of things that we need to find layer, layer of employment laws, helping that research. Also, the other, the training piece, we need, we need, we are behind in our training where I get concerned about compliance. We're vulnerable with some of our systems and our reporting, OSHA laws, that type of thing. So not to go on, but there's plenty of things that paralegal can do. But the other piece I looked at, we don't have someone devoted in our office, which is unusual too, to a lot of other HR models, to labor relations. And yes, I, my wheelhouse is very strong with labor relations, and that's great, but having someone devoted to that, because especially for succession, and I have to look at that way, of the best interest of the town. I'm an appointee. You know, I leave and I want my legacy to be left to place in the ballpark. I just, that would be the worst thing for me. And I want to make sure that-
Me too.
I know. And I take pride in that and I want to make sure I do the best job and again, in the best interest of the town. And when I look at this, we don't need another, we really need another person who can work at that, focus on that, be a support with that in many ways, sit second feet with me through the contract negotiations. I want to save money with that, because the town attorney's never been the one to do the contract negotiations, right, throughout the history. Normally not. It's usually outsourced or, and I don't know, and to me, that would be a great asset to have a labor relations specialist who could take that role or do a subcommittee or, and be able to redline and do contract proposals. But in the interim, also do the day-to-day advisory for managers and supervisors who need help. Have the union meetings, be in charge of the safety committees. We have, the Labor Management Committee, there's lots of things we need to deliver. I would love to be at all of them and I think the Assistant Director too, but we have to kind of parse it out between the benefits, risk management, labor relations, and I put all those types of things in there, the functions. And I think, I do believe, I'm gonna say I think, I think based on my years of doing this type of work and what you kind of need to shore it up, and particularly since we have that weirdo like legal piece, you know, that kind of we function as, I shouldn't say it's weird, it's kind of weird for HR kind of that way, I think that would really be, I do think this would really make it so it's working well. We're going to get functional. We won't be over-functioning where we shouldn't be, or at least we're going to properly, you know, we'll be focusing on the right priority. And we'll save the town money, liability, and make things better for employees and morale, make things accountable on people and have the compliance measures met. So I can kind of feel better at night that, you know, that things are working very well and I can focus on really fun stuff like, you know, what's so great about working with the town and bringing the recruitment and the diversity pieces in and all that stuff in that we need to do. But we can't do that until we get the foundation. So that's, I just wanted to, again, thank you for the opportunity to come back and ask and welcome. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. Do you, I don't know if anyone else needs clarification, but, so the two, the two new positions are the Labor Relations Specialist and the Paralegal, so this is for everyone's benefit, right? Okay. I'll turn this over to the board. Questions? Ms. Marmian?
So I guess I have a question in terms of we're, we're going to go into budget year soon. You know, typically we see the add-on of personnel in the budget act. And I, I respect what you said. I would say that I agree with your analysis. These are necessary additions to the personnel. And as Ms. Cupchak said earlier, yes, we said we would like to have a new HR person come in with a fresh eye and we want to, you know, we want to hear what that person has to say. So I'm really pleased with this. I think it's thoughtful. But my question is, you know, and I guess it's a cost benefit in terms of if we do it now or if we wait until the budget season to put these new personnel in. And are we gonna, you know, are, again, are we at risk of losing money or, I mean, can you put it into dollars and cents for us so that we can look at maybe the cost of doing it now versus-
So, I mean, I'll let Kathleen jump in, obviously, but we, you know, I did put it in the budget last year and was told to come back for a transfer. To put it in the budget next year, we mean it would not be able to be utilized until July. This department, Kathleen's being very gracious, this department is underwater. It was underwater when I asked for money last year. It's still underwater. It needs the attention. We have a lot of employees. We have serious issues that are coming up all the time and we just can't give up. It is a liability waiting to happen every single day. And she has reiterated that by coming up to me and saying, holy cow, how the hell is this department running? And I said, I get it. And get yourself settled, learn your department and how this transition is going on, and then put together what you think, because I know it's underwater. You decide how you want to manage it in your own way, but regardless of who it is, it needs more staff. It just cannot manage it. And if you look at other towns and we showed, we just don't have the right staff for a town to size, the amount of employees that we're managing. So if you want to-
Yeah, and I think with the extra layer of the FOIA piece and the risk management, which is involved, I noticed even the city attorney in Bridgeport, you have that risk management piece under your mission statement about having that part. And it, it's huge. It's huge. And it's time-consuming and it, but it should be, because you need to follow up on things and do that. So you're talking also too about also OSHA compliance and making sure safety measures are met and those type of things. It's not just, you know, oh, risk management means that, you know, you, someone ripped their, tore a sweater at the senior center and they want a replacement for it. You may have to investigate someone's claim, especially if it seems odd or strange or like over the top, you have to follow up on it. Yes, KERMA can help us with that, but they're not going to do all that work without extra money. And we also don't want to pay claims we shouldn't. The other thing is that, just the other piece we're losing, we're not getting money back from going after insured who, in cars, who hit, their fault, hit our town employees' cars or crave damage or do something. We're not going back after them, because we don't have the, we're not getting on it. And that's, we just don't have the time. And that's not good either. That's a lot of, you know, that's revenue we're losing and we shouldn't be. I also think that we're not fully following up on people, workers who, and I hate to, I hate to say it, but I'm like, I'm getting concerns about some potentially workers' comp fraud or potentially things like that, that, yes, our PMA can help us with that, but we also have to be on it, on the investigation to make sure we're partnering with them for the surveillance and type of things like that. I get, the other thing is that if we don't get that, we have demands, and I'm going to try to do this without sounding too much, but one of the, originally, the, we, I have to do report on, employer-based health plans have this information now, the prescription drugs and healthcare spending. And the data submission goes, it's called an RXBC, and it stands for prescription drug and, RX stands for prescription drugs and DC stands for data collection. And this report goes to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services for collecting this type of stuff. They want to know, identify major drivers of increases in prescription drugs and healthcare spending, understand how prescription drug rebates, all these kinds of information. And of course, there's another layer added on now to our Benefits Manager, who does not even have the support. She comes from Greenwich, where they had, I think, like nineteen employees in ATAR, and they have a state plan. So they have the state benefit plan, so they don't have to manage all these separate plans. It's just basically the state does it for them. So now there's this extra layer of reporting. And that's just one example. There's also the Affordable Care Act with the IRS. And if you don't report properly, or if you miss, if you don't pay coverage properly, I'm not saying it shouldn't, should happen, but it could happen if you're not paying attention, you get hit with fines. And those fines, I put them in reports, because they're a very small flash, they print, sorry. I mean, one of them with the RXBC, it can be a hundred dollars a day for participant. And then the ACA penalty for failure to offer coverage or other not reporting rules. One example is three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per month per employee. And those fines can be even bigger for not being compliant with the IRS. And I don't, I don't know about you, but I don't, the IRS really scares me when it comes in, because just like the Primal Labor, they come in and they like get a mistake with payroll. We had dodged a bullet, and I'm saying we're, I mean, I'm just saying we're vulnerable. I'm not saying we've done anything that, you know, yet, but they can come in and you can get triple fined for mistakes. And I used to work with them, I'd plead with them and say, please don't hurt me that hard, but, you know, they're, they're going to come in if they audit. And also, it's hugely, you know, they're looking, if they're looking for something, you don't want to find huge mistakes and holes. And that's, again, another thing that, again, lessons to credibility of HR. And that's one thing that I keep, I did a survey of managers when I came in and employees and I met with different groups and union leadership and I still am. And the biggest thing I heard is that, you know, we don't have a faith in HR and we don't trust HR and these type of things. And I went, that's why, you know, what's going on? And this relationship building we're trying to be, that's a lot of work in building that trust. And if I'm running around trying to send off penalties or things, and I don't have the staff to help with that, I can't build that. And I, I can't save, I can't save you all money with like doing contract negotiations, because there just won't be the time. And if I have the proper staff, we can do all these things and plus, get this town modernized enough where, again, we don't have things like having to worry about investigating employee misconduct, like, because people don't, aren't following the rules, because we have the compliance ahead of time. Training managers to make sure, like sexual harassment, workplace violence prevention, ethics, huge thing we need to, I mean, it's just, everyone, including, you know, elected officials should get ethics training. That's, it's one of the things we need to roll out. So there's, I don't have the numbers yet of what, because it hasn't happened, thank goodness, right? But I don't want it to happen. And that's where I get, I get the fear about not getting properly staffed on time. And look, I can work late hours. I can, I'm a workaholic in some levels, but I, you know, I get up and run early and I think about what to do and then I can be here all night. But I also fear about losing good staff. Our Benefits Manager is incredible. She's just incredible. I thank the universe she agreed to come here. So far, our Assistant Director is incredibly innovative, responsive, has great programs, but I, they're poaching people. I love to write, especially HR, good HR people, because we know there's a lot of ones that aren't so good.
Right. Departments too, you know, in other areas we've seen that.
Yeah, right.
And I think that if you have a department that is underwater and, you know, it's an unpleasant place to work because you're ever, ever, well, somebody said this the other day in a different context. They, I said, how are you doing today? He said, oh, I feel like I'm failing every day, like I wake up failing every day. And that's what happens, I think, when you're in an organization where you don't have enough people to help you get your job. So you feel like you never are doing your job right. And that's what's been happening in this department. And I talked about this. I saw when I came here, obviously, you know, we had to fire, we had to terminate the HR Director who was subsequently arrested. You know, there's a lot of problems that happen in this town, as we all know. And we are trying diligently to fix it and clean it up. And it's not easy. It really isn't. It takes a lot of time and effort and a lot of time. And, you know, Kathleen can be plugging along in the middle of her day, trying to do stuff and, you know, in walks other employees who says they just got threatened by another employee, and now Kathleen stays, is dealing with this situation the whole day. And, and this is the stuff, you know, this is the stuff. And I think you made a point, Jim, during the budget presentation, was just basic matrix of HR. You know, the amount of employees that this town has, in addition to the Board of Ed stuff that we have to deal with. We just don't have enough staff.
Okay.
I mean, it's like a simple matrix.
I want to, thank you. I just want to make sure, I don't keep everybody here till midnight, but Mr. Matoli, you had-
No, I just-
I know you're a workaholic, but really, like, not-
Well, it's not a disgusting, I think people should have life balance.
Yes.
Right.
All right. So I want to, I want to move through the board's questions.
I just, a couple of comments, not really questions, that I'm, I'm going to support this. And the reason why I'm going to support it is really the presentation and the backup that we have. We didn't have that during the budget time, with all due respect to you, Brenda. We didn't get a presentation like this. You're actually, you want to have an extra position from what was originally budgeted, I believe. I think, I don't think, during the budget season, was a Labor Relations Specialist and a paralegal.
Now, there was one additional full-time FTE.
Yeah, the part-time, there's a part-time position, so that's why.
My, my point is this, that I, I'm going to support it. I think, you know, without going back time a few months ago, is that we knew a new person was coming aboard, we wanted this new person to take a look at the department. You've done that. You've documented the reasons why. I think that these positions are necessary and I'm going to support it. My position during the budget season was, because we were having a new person coming, that we wanted that person to take a look at this. And we, quite frankly, did and get the detailed presentation during that time. So thank you and I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
Others? Mr. Stark?
Just looking back at the approved budget, just wanted to check which positions are filled. There was a Benefits Manager, Human Resources Assistant, HR Generalist, Human Resources Director, which I guess is you, and then a Diversity Recruitment Coordinator. Are those all filled or no?
No. The Generalist, I looked at that and I thought that would not be, I just thought a Generalist position wasn't, wasn't as subject matter specific.
General.
And then to general, exactly. Well, that was the request they have.
Right.
That was the request in the budget. So it was moving a part-time to a full-time to a Generalist, and then there was a part-time diversity recruitment and swapping out the risk management job, adding some money to it, making it HR assistant.
I mean, ultimately, I think the right way to look at it is sort of the old budget, because the budget was more or less held flat. Clearly, there's a different organization being presented here than we either had in the past or was prepared by the last Director. So I'm not sure there's an apples-to-apples comparison, but I think the key thing which I, which Mr. Schmidt put together was a comparison of the budget, meaning budget we approved and what this proposed organization costs. And so I think that's, you know, the relevance.
Frank did it.
What, Frank did it? Okay. We don't have to dock them.
We don't have to. Is that all ready back?
Yeah.
As long as anybody likes it.
Okay. Mr. Stark, does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, but is there an Assistant and a Benefits Manager or?
There, yes. We have a Benefits Manager at Placy, Benefits Manager retired. There's an Assistant Director, an HR Director, with a part-time HR Assistant, which they had before. And there's a full-time HR Assistant right now.
No diversity person yet?
Not yet. We have to, that's my next thing. Once I get the foundation, we have seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe, for a consultant to look at what that would look like, the needs, because that's a little bit more complex. Because it's, and again, it's important and I'm not saying that, but at this point before I can get this from RST, really need to shore this piece up. And I haven't forgotten about that.
Right. So can you remember, we put the seventy-five thousand aside for a consultant to review the equity tax forward to blueprint, but no one's had time to even write one up. So we were hoping that once Kathleen's department's fully staffed, then they'll have the time to be able to do that and then that work can start moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a comment on this. Oh, Mr. Walsh, do you want to?
Yeah, I have some questions. A little belated, welcome aboard since-
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. In four and a half months, you seem to have identified all these different positions that you need. Some of them, like the FOI person was also the, I believe, was also the risk management person for.
Yeah.
So you're splitting up functions a little bit. I didn't realize we'd hired an Assistant HR Director. Could I get a copy of their job description?
Um, no, I thought I brought it with me.
Oh, okay, for the Assistant.
Uh, yes. I probably could, no, I didn't like attach it.
No, it's not in here. Is it in here?
I didn't like attach it.
Well, it said, um, it said the-
No, I think we have the paralegal.
All the paralegal.
Yeah. You know what? I think I left a copy, I have a copy in my office, I can grab one for you.
Yeah, you can email to us, to our chair, to our-
That was part of the budget anyway. That was part of the budget anyway.
Chairwoman.
No, that was,
Well, actually, yeah, it, listen, the, the funding was in place. It was a risk management position, which was kind of a part-time job. And so we just, we have the funding, um, because that person let go, so that funding built up. So we were able to just re, um, reorganize the position into something more than just risk management.
Okay.
Gotcha, thanks.
Um, Mr. Walsh?
Um, sure. So, um, see, I just didn't know about the assistant HR director. And is any of that responsibility in contained in any of the other job descriptions?
Well, yes, there, there, the, I'm having the, a full-time HR assistant who does primarily the payroll function, the munis function. And that's the part, um, he, um, so Peter Ritchie is the HR assistant right now in charge. He's gonna be overtaking that piece of the payroll. He's also going to be assisting with the risk management piece and the workers comp, make sure that's sorted out with the paralegal as well to that. But also the labor relations specialist, cause it all, it's energy. I want them all to be generalists, if you will, because when someone goes out, I can't have the payroll not done. Or if something needs to be done in workers comp, I can't have, say, oh, the paralegal's on here, so I guess I'm not doing it. You know, I mean, I mean, it's really important to have everyone being very hands-on in different things. But the focus will be, you're right, the FOIA was with the risk management, but I, what I'm seeing of it, it just wasn't, I mean, it's just a heme. It's just huge and it's so much time. And I don't know necessarily that, you know, that a lot of times it, it takes us that, that ability to go through it and make sure you know what's exact, what's not, what, you know, it's win it out, keep it out, because the liability for not, not giving it out is like a thousand dollars. But the liability, if you give out something confidential or someone's, but they're, something personal or something, that is, you know, you know, could be so much, so anyway.
Okay. So are you, are you, is your department still testing this new version of munis again?
Okay, the new version of munis is being tested, it's in. What it really is, it's just basically, it's the same munis, but with a new,
Not the new, new version that we ultimately wanted to,
Yeah, right.
You probably know, you both know a lot more about it.
So, yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's basically, we had to, they had to be upgraded because of the support system, the IT support system. So we had no choice but to put this in. It's got, you know, the dashboard is similar, some, some different features. But, uh, this is one of the things we need to work on. We need to get the data. The data's not active, we need to clean that up. Peter has, did that at the Board of Ed in Norwalk. He took that data, got it scrubbed, got it cleaned up. It took him about nine months to get it together, but he's familiar. He also was able to get systems that talk to, which we still have looking in place, with time and attendance. And we want to get more self-service for managers and supervisors. We're willfully behind with that.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
How many more months do you have to do your testing in your department on munis before it actually goes, the new version?
It's been, it's already been.
Before it goes live?
It's live, Caitlin's here, it's live, yeah, it's live.
Okay. Alright, so everything's working on your side on that?
Uh, well, the, like the old way it was.
What?
Well, it's live, it's working, but it's the same data.
Same data.
And it's the same, it's,
You don't have new functionality with this?
Yeah, yeah, we need, yeah, it's like, you know, it doesn't,
But Mr. Hazel camp was describing, it made it seem like there's a lot of testing, anything. So that was done over the summer and now it's live and everything's working perfectly, right?
It's working the way it was supposed to, but it's not, it's far from perfect.
Well, my understanding, this is just a system.
Right.
Caitlin, maybe you can come talk about it. It's not a system update. I mean, what, uh, from what I understand, maybe I understand it wrong, um, we kind of like upgraded our munis system, but we should probably get a brand, like a whole new system. But your system's only good as the data that you put into it. So the data was inputted, but it wasn't inputted right. So like munis reads the police contract in a certain way, reads the PETA contract in a certain way, reads the FEMA contract in a certain way, reads the nurse. It reads, but nobody put this data in right.
From my, from HR's perspective, I don't know what it was.
So, no, but I'm just saying,
So you mean the contract parameters of these?
You're lying, you're creep.
This is our rate, turn rate.
Right, gotcha.
You know, it's like higher date.
You wanna talk about it?
So we're, we ran an older version of munis. I mean, John, you can probably, I expect Bridgeport went through the, the munis as well. Um, and which was being unsupported at some point. So we had to migrate to a new version. So it was basically seven versions up from where we were. So there's a lot of things that have changed within seven versions. But there is some, I think, Mr. Walsh, to your point, some functionality that we're not, we hadn't used in the old version. That we're looking into possibly using in the new version. But it did go live last weekend. We had training last week for the end users. So there's been some growing pains, um, Dave Kelly can attest to as well, just, um, different login information. So every single person's dashboard was different. So we're, we're just going through that right now. But there is functionality that HR, maybe a little bit in finance piece too, maybe you think, but haven't. There's just functionality that we haven't used in the older version that we're look, looking into using right now.
But munis, munis, so it's all updated. You obviously decided, did your work, because we heard about all this testing and you've done by your department for payroll to get up to whatever. And that's all been completed, correct?
That's been completed. And, and I will say that my, some of my staff went, the training was excellent. So thank you.
What if, Brenda, you just mentioned something about we should probably get a new system. What are we talking about?
No, I,
An upgrade or are you talking about a whole new, a whole new corporate finance system?
Does it need to be, like you're saying, it's like Microsoft, one through ten. So we were like, it, you know, way behind. Now, does our system, from what I understand, do we need a whole new system or is this, is it just?
We're staying on munis.
New function, I think it's maximizing the use of what we have.
Yeah.
Put it into place, you know, some of the functions that we're not using right now and haven't been using to, to, to put those into use.
And there could be some add-ons.
So we still have some functionality.
Munis is the thing, yeah.
It's still our future, right?
Yes, yes.
Right.
Okay, okay, cause you scared before.
Functionality things.
Yes, we do, we need functionality, HR particularly. Where, there's a lot more things we could be doing to make things less likely to get errors.
Right.
And one of them is that getting the data good, to scrub. And that's, you know, something we'll work on and, you know, we'll have that. But all the other pieces, a lot of, I mean, I'm just stating that some really cool stuff there that if you add it on or if you use it, you could do a lot more automatically and you could provide more self-service and that stuff. But I think it's more, and I will say this, I think it's more of the HR piece, when our piece coming in, that we're seeing which more, that we can be using. And that's why we need the,
Got it.
Expertise, subject matter expertise in our, in our department to do that.
Now, can that system read the contracts better or does it need to have the data put in?
The data needs to be better. And again, that comes from, you know, the first line. And there's too, it's very data entry heavy still when it, we, and it doesn't have to be. But that's, again, we're, we can work on that. But thank goodness we have both modern support and we're up to, or we need to be so it won't crash.
Mr. Walsh?
Where do you stand with this timekeeping system that we once again push the money forwards next year? And what Mr. Hazel camp is pushing, telling us is just,
Like Cronos or?
We, well, I don't know, but the, I better look at that, but there are time, we do need timekeeping, um, something there. I don't know what the best one is and what, we discussed this yesterday in my group. There's certain things we need to prioritize. This is important, the time and attendance piece, and it's something that's really important because to maybe track attendance and making the supervisors more accountable for making their employees accountable, you know, looking at attendance, so they can be that more assertive. I don't know, there is some money there. And to answer your question, I don't know the answer to that yet. I haven't had a chance.
So you're not sold on Cronos?
Not necessarily, yeah. It's good for what it can do, but, um, I've used Cronos. It's got its benefits. It's great for time and attendance tracking. But I don't know necessarily that that's the end-all to be-all at this point either. Particularly now that I have two people, new people in there who have used both, have, are very familiar with both.
Thank you, okay.
And can probably weigh in better than me.
Got it.
You know, so.
So basically, you need all the data put in before you can even try to use it.
Well, I think we're talking about a value, you're trying to evaluate whether that's the right solution.
I think we need it. I know, I know we need it.
You need time and attendance, you just don't know if Cronos is the solution.
Right, right.
Okay, so since this is the first time you've before us, when you decide whatever you decide, just be prepared, we're gonna be asking you, or at least I'm gonna be asking you, is this gonna cost us any more money? Like if an employee stays for six or seven minutes past their time and does that five days a week, and that happens with three hundred employees, are we gonna get a million dollars for over budget?
Yeah.
Because you gotta, you know, I'm not gonna overload, cause everyone's heard me say this before. But the problem is, is that be careful with the devil you choose to do it. And, you know, cause, you know, you and your employees are great, but you're gonna hold them to their numbers? They're gonna hold you to theirs, you're gonna walk out the door. And, you know, you're either gonna get less work done or you're gonna be paying more for it. So just be prepared when that comes.
Well, that's the next one point, thank you. Evasion hours stuff can be very costly.
On the FOI request, do we have to provide the information electronically and might we not just put it in a paper and make people pay for it?
What you can do is this, this is what the police do, the police department does, you can pay for people to work the hours they work overtime to gather the data, which I'm looking at too, cause they do that. So do you have to provide electronically if it's available that way? And I gotta look at, I gotta refresh it. You, you kind of do, cause if you're doing, they, they might wanna say, hey, I wanna come and look at it and I'll decide what I wanna copy. But we do that, we need to look more about how we can charge for things.
You can charge.
Yeah, because you can charge, I think there was, I think, I know that Bridgeport went through a whole public hearing on, I mean, the legislative body, but charging for that. But I, yes, you can charge and I think it's also true, it's more the time spent reviewing data and I call it coloring, redacting.
It's a nightmare.
Yeah.
But, um, we seem to have to recapture the cost. I mean, so to the extent that you guys figure that out, um, because I think there's, you know, sometimes, especially in the political world, people are asking for every email on one given thing. And while they're entitled to it, the time consumption, if we can charge for the time, then maybe we can eventually get an FOI officer if there's that much work to do, as long as we know the cost is being covered. So it's just something,
That's the next one point. And I think that's something that we, we should support and track and put the systems in, but,
Okay. And looking at your paralegal duties and, and, you know, if I'll do honestly, I'm an attorney and which, I'm a general counsel. But there seems to be a lot of these things. What level of paralegal are you looking for? Are you looking for someone with a paralegal degree, formal paralegal degree, or an experience in a, like an HR firm?
Well, yeah.
Like an employment law firm?
Well, when I put it, when I put the paralegal function here and I look at the requirements, um, I kind of copied stuff from, I looked at Bridgeport, I looked at New Haven, I looked at, um, some other paralegal in the state. So I put the, um, the, the minimum qualifications. The bachelor's degree in experience providing paraprofessional legal assistance to an attorney, um, that's one. And then I, then I put different, put different things in there. Again, this is just, this is a template at this point, something we're putting in. Yeah, they have, they have background in labor and plant, but I also think they're tradable.
Okay. And I guess the question rolls into, are you gonna be, who, who's gonna be on the negotiating team for contracts? Because you refer to the negotiating team and certain people's roles being on the negotiating team. But are you gonna be handling all of that negotiation? Are you like the head negotiator for the town?
I, I envision that because I have a great deal of experience in it and it can be done if you get the right staff. So I think the labor relations specialist is key to that.
Well, that's the way it was handled before.
Well, it's gonna handle all different ways. I mean, with all due respect,
Yeah, we,
With all due respect, the sense is that we've never historically,
Oh, no, no, I,
Let a general, let, let our town attorney ever handle negotiations.
Oh.
That's false because we let, we had town attorneys who handled labor negotiations for almost fifteen years.
Oh, I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for like fifteen.
I thought that this might have been.
Those are outside lawyers, though.
No, 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 Dick Saxel and Ken Flato negotiated those contracts.
Okay.
Oh, really?
For all those years.
Okay.
Um, and Mike Tetra continued it for a period of time and then he switched to some outside people. And then he handled it for outside people.
So you intend to be the,
And then we hired an HR director who had done outside work in negotiating contracts and we paid him fifty thousand dollars more on a top salary. Because he was gonna, we didn't need to hire an outside counsel or have somebody do it.
Well, I think that's outrageous that you had to give him, but that's what's meaning.
Yeah.
Because maybe as part of my, if you get a, a director, an assistant director, a labor relation, you get the right team. You wanna keep it in-house.
Yeah.
Because there's many, many reasons, but I didn't know that, so I didn't need to misspoke.
No, 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 that's fine, I'm just trying to figure out your philosophy.
Oh, I just thought traditionally it was, it was not by the town attorney.
We've been here, um, the HR director was not doing the negotiations, but would bring, Right, would bring in like, um, an attorney to assist with some of these, you know, they would work together. And for example, the arbitration, um, that we're in now, that's being handled by an arbitration firm.
Okay.
Attorney who, that is special.
Sorry for understating. So is the goal then to have you negotiate the contracts, but if they go to arbitration? If, if one of the unions declare wherever requesting arbitration,
Well, that would be advice, that you should use a specialty firm, cause that's what they do.
I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm just gonna say it depends. I've done binding arbitration.
Yeah.
But if I have the right staff, I can do it. I prefer not to have to hire outside counsel because it gets very costly. And I will tell you another thing, it's better if you're a negotiator and you build a relationship with the unions. Cause I've done it that way, where I've built a relationship with union leadership. So when you go in there, there is that relationship building where you're going in there and it's not this kind of just hired gun, or maybe has no skin in the game. And I'm not being critical, I've been an outside counsel negotiator as well, I've been in-house. So I just think that that would be, now again, if you have so many things going on and you have so many things blowing up, cause binding arbitration is a lot of work. And it's not your norm, you don't wanna be going to arbitration with everything. But I think it, I think your answer would be, it depends.
Okay. And on, like, uh, disgracing plates, pleadings, motions, are you gonna be going to court for the town on some of this stuff? Or, or do we hire outside counsel?
Well, if it's CHRO, I would, might have to go and represent, I've, I've done it, I could, since I'm an attorney. Um, it depends upon time.
Yeah, I think that's the question.
Right.
I mean, if I do my business, I only hire outside people, but that's your specialty.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I would, I would not be doing litigation for the town. I don't think I'd ever, I wouldn't have the time to do that effectively. Doing the hearings before the SBA or the Labor Board, I could do, we could do that. And if the labor relations specialist, they also could do that. There's some lower level things that you don't have to be an attorney to do, that you could present, you know, represent the town for.
Okay. Other than you and the, um, the labor relations specialist over you is gonna be part of the labor negotiations team? Who else would be part of the labor negotiations team?
Well, it depends upon, okay, so with the labor relations specialist, I envision. Potentially the paralegal could be also a part of assistance with that, with research and, and redlining and making scrapping proposals. But my way, I say negotiation team, you, you wanna get your stakeholders. So I see it two ways. You have your behind-the-scenes team, which is probably budget or some of the expertise that you can caucus with. And then you have key players on your team, which might be subject matter expertise. Like I'm doing that day, I'm doing, uh, public works, I might ask, you know, Anthony to come to talk about certain things and be the storyteller, why we need this, why this proposal's important. So I would have key players on that team. But yeah, the, the two consistent would be the, the HR director and the labor relations specialist. And if we have to go to committee, I would hope that labor relations specialist is, would be trained enough to be able to do subcommittee work if we need to. Like branch out to different, sometimes you wanna talk about different pieces that, um, that, like, I noticed, for instance, it might be a pilot program to try something and you wanna put that in a contract. And, or maybe talking about service rating, um, issue and it requires maybe just a few people going into a subcommittee.
Okay. And who's gonna be handling the sexual harassment training and the investigations? Because in my job, people ask me, what's your biggest fear? I say sexual harassment, right away, without a doubt. It's something that can bring down entire operation, an entire organization immediately. Cause the claims are so large if it turns out to be true. And if you don't investigate it within twenty-four hours.
Well, the, the two-fold things is that there already is a system in place, sexual harassment training is the two-hour, it's the mandated one that goes by the, um, departments.
The minimum required.
Minimum, yeah, that everyone has to have.
Yeah.
But then there's the, again, the ongoing education and the outreach.
These are typical HR things that you're gonna do.
Right, like, I mean, and I do, it would be an HR investigation, um, investigated right. Or if it's high-level manager and I happen to represent the manager because if the manager's had a grievance, the, the place got some grievances against, you'd have to look at outsourcing and I did that in New Haven and we become a pretty good private investigator. Excellent, excellent, who could do these highly sensitive things, sixty dollars an hour, did outstanding work. But you have to look at it, you might have to put that up. But I agree, the biggest thing, if you don't investigate something, if it's not true, you're, you're a lot of liability.
That's not, I'm concerned on how, who's it, so you're primarily to be handling that?
I probably, yeah, because people are gonna come to HR or it'd be the assistant director, they're gonna be trained. I don't want someone to, to come, uh, being thrown away now. And, and again, it could be, depending what the situation is, you have to assess it to see whether it can stay in-house or go out. And I, the ultimate goal is also having the paralegal labor relations specialist to assist with the investigation. Whether it's interviews or gathering evidence or, um, helping writing the reports. So researching the law, so.
Is HR gonna be there, I didn't see a lot of this in this stuff right now, for training employees on how to do that?
Employees, how to do, employees like helping supervisors?
It's how, like, you know, that there is assisting the employees, that not just all the compliance stuff, and sexual harassment investigation, and payroll, and whatever.
Do you mean performance management?
Not really performance management, but I mean, do you have any sense of bringing in, like, either through a paid service, or through trainings that are done, we could buy HR, buy the departments, to try to make employees better, that's either their job or just in general?
So I was just going to jump in and say, we've been doing that since we came in, with even understaffed, we have CCM trainings, we have had home, Jackie, how many?
Twenty, thirty trainings?
Yeah, we've been really building up on that.
Is that done at a different level than HR? Is that done?
Well, it's big, we did it with the Hazel Camp, and Jackie, who knows?
I've been handling it, because they're short.
Because they, I'll be happy to pass that back to them. Yeah, when they're ready to go, but yeah, that's a hot big priority for us, for us.
Okay, I think it's all right.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. All right, anyone else?
This is a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I just, um, just.
I love them.
Thank you very much for your beautiful face and weight, and giving me an opportunity. I really do, I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, we do. I just want to make a, a quick comment. I, first of all, I appreciate this organization. I will say for the record, this makes a lot more sense to me than what was presented previously in terms of structure, and in particular, I appreciate your comments about DEI. I did not think it made sense that that would be under the umbrella of a part-time recruiter before, and I appreciate your sort of, you know, what you implied, that that's a more, it's a broader and more structural, strategic imperative, if you will, that touches all the different things you do, so I appreciate that, and I think this makes a lot more sense. I do, two things, I just want to say for the record, I will support this, but I really don't like approving new positions mid-year. And, and the reason I say that is because, you know, we have this, unlike a budget process, which is transparent, which is open to the public, where there's a lot of information, where the first select woman takes it off, and one of the, one of the things she specifically talks about is new positions and how they're going to benefit the town, we don't have any of that, we had an agenda out Friday, the public doesn't get to engage, the other elected bodies don't get to engage, so I don't think it's a good practice, and I don't want this to be a precedent, but I understand and I support what you're asking for. To Ms. Marmian's questions, I hope that, I don't expect you to have all these answers or come back with a, an ROI, you know, tonight, but I, I would be interested, and particularly when we get to the budget process, of the metrics that you put together. For example, I'd love to know how much money we're going to save with our town attorney when he's not driving up to FOIA hearings, or doing things that we bring in-house. I think those are important things to measure. You talked about workers' comp, you know, you talked about a number of areas where there are, I think, tangible savings resulting from these new, from the new structure you're putting in, and I think having the metrics around that is very important. I realize data is a struggle, but I, I hope that when the budget comes around, you can, you know, demonstrate some of the things you've been able to do in that regard, and, you know, your goals for next year. So I appreciate all of that, and I, and I plan to support this. Are there any, anyone else have a comment? Okay, so we have one more item, I believe, before we vote on this. Is that right, Jared?
Yes.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Cash me, maybe one less tomorrow morning.
Sleep in, no dragging in the morning.
Welcome.
What? This better be quick. Make it quick, Jared. Okay.
You reached a, in a clear way.
We've, we're now at cranky, cranky level hour.
Cranky level hour, so.
All right, so the last, the last item in this list of transfers is the registrar voters. There was a resignation of one of the registrars in early summer, I believe, and had to replace him, and there was some overlapping transition work that had to be done, getting, getting a new registrar up to speed, and that required additional funding that we couldn't, didn't anticipate, so we're asking for $10,000 to do that.
Okay, so I just, and I, I had raised this question at the last meeting, and I had an interest in this, and a sensitivity to it, frankly, because we cut the budget for the registrar voters, but this, the reason we need this additional request is, is not because of the redistricting, it's because of the transition time, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board on this? Ms. Marmian?
So this is payroll only, right? Related to payroll only?
Seasonal.
Seasonal payroll, so nothing is, you're not asking for any more money for the upcoming election, polling, mailers, anything like that? That money is intact?
Yes, and to the extent that this seasonal money goes towards maybe someone working an hour on the election, then it would be used for that, but it's not like for voting, voter mailings, or like ballots, or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Other questions? Mr. Walsh?
Any of this money have to do with any of this stuff? We've been reading about in the papers, comparatively, with the registrar voters, and the lock systems, and police intervention, and all this stuff. This is all transition money. Okay. Yep. Okay, but there's been expenses, right? I take it? Um, has there been expenses?
All right, I just, I want to respectfully stick to this budget request. I, I understand the concern, Mr. Walsh.
We haven't, I'll say, we haven't identified any and put any into this request. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board on this issue? Mr. Curly? Forgot about you up there, Craig.
They're quiet.
Okay, all right. So does that, I think that covers all the elements of this transfer request. Okay, so, no comments, no comments, concerns from everyone. So if not, I will, I will move to put this to a vote. So, all in favor of approving reappropriations and transfers of surplus from the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, as set forth on the posted backup, please say aye. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Tissani, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Maton, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Leclaire, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, okay, it is unanimous eight zero. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move to item 11, to hear consider an act on any communications. Do you have anything, Mr.?
I don't have any, no, no additional.
Okay, I have a couple of quick things. First, our colleague, Mr. DeWitt, is not here tonight, he's on a business trip, and he sent his regrets for not being available because of the meeting being rescheduled. He asked that I share, that, just if you want to mark it in your calendars, he intends to call a meeting of the Budget Committee on November 1st, immediately before the board meeting at 6:30. So at 6:30, immediately before the 7:30 meeting. All board members are welcome and encouraged to attend, and the purpose of the meeting will be to gather feedback about last year's budget process, with an eye toward anyone's, you know, toward improving the process for next year. If anyone has suggestions, I hope everyone comes, I, I think it's a great opportunity to do a postmortem, and we have not done that for a few years. So that's, that's November 1st, 6:30, the meeting will be noticed, it will be public, but you can have through your calendars. The second item, just to quickly update the board, Mr. Walsh, please jump in if you'd like, at our previous meeting, and earlier, we talked a little bit about the Capital Projects Working Group, and its charge, which is to help develop the five-year capital plan, that will then be put before the boards. Just as an update, the group has met three times. The meetings are public, the first organizational internal meeting was not public, the subsequent meetings have been public, recordings are available on Fair TV on Demand. There are four more meetings scheduled, the next one is on November 10th, and based on the current meeting schedule that the first select woman put forth, the draft plan should be available to be presented for the board's consideration sometime in January, date to be determined in January. That is the current schedule. I know there were questions about the timing, I had thought we might be able to do that in December, but based on the current meeting schedule, that is the plan. I know that's a little later than everyone would like, it's consistent with last year, happens to be consistent with last year when we did the capital workshop in January, but that is, that is the schedule, and if anyone wants more detail on the schedule, I'm happy to forward it to you, just let me know. Any other communications questions? All right, we can move to item 12, which is to, motion to adjourn. Ms. Marmian? Seconded by Ms. Leclaire, holding favor.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Four hours, not, not four hours. That works.
My wife's at the budget meeting, making adjustments, I don't make it harder.
And that's the biggest.
You can't just complain, you got to stand and make it.
You can't be here in a budget meeting at 12:30.